Alright, so we are pros. Most of us are here. We're missing Jordans tonight. So. We met with you guys at the beginning of the year two thousand and twenty-three, and we have some objectives that we wanted to accomplish this year. It's going on. It's in October now, and we've got, we've gotten some stuff done. We've got a lot of stuff done. So we're pretty excited. We'll give you updates, show you what we have going on. So. Of course, we're pros, parks, right? Open space and trails. We have, uh, we updated our mission statement, just to make it a little bit clearer, try to get the vision more concentrated and clarify it, but. I'll just give you guys a minute to just read it over, and I want you to also think why you're reading over on the strategic plan that the board put together, and I think that. Our vision and your vision align very well. And I wouldn't say it's, I would say it's by chance. It's just something that we've had internally. And when you guys presented this treaty plan, we're like, we are on the same page. You're thinking the same, we're doing the same. We want to achieve the same. It just could be a minute to prove that. So yeah, in two thousand and twenty, January, we came through with some projects we wanted to do. Well, my first project was updating the baseball field. Uh, we have the high school in town now, so we wanted to expand the size of the, uh. The baseball field out there, so it had ninety-foot bases and full high school league regulation opportunities. So now the field's open up for. Practices or schools, more times. So that was a pretty easy one. You guys use the robot in Alan? No robot needed. Uh, the second project, our tip on the, um, was the bike racks. So we installed, we have a bike rack in order. We're gonna be putting it on the. Uh, east side of town, near the ponds. And this is something that we're looking to add more to throughout the town, but we're starting with, with one is what our budget allows for this year to get one going. And that'll be installed before the end of the year. And we're looking at putting one on the east side, harvest village, community park. And then somewhere near, I think the skate park, the Centennial Park as well for. The recreation that goes out there. And then, uh, probably one of the bigger projects that we had was completing the east side of the skate park. So this one was, um, pretty easy to do, I think, mainly because I've been with the parks board. For three years now, and I've been working with the skate park for over three years, so it's easy just to keep things rolling. With this particular project, where I was able to raise thirteen hundred dollars. And then with the retirement, you know, the community, put our monies together and be able to complete this. Uh, thirteen hundred dollars went strictly to materials this time. And then we had, I was, you know, probably another couple hundred hours with the labor, professional contractors to kids. I know a couple of kids a hundred bucks, actually. But I wrote the sign on their real, like the smallest print. First one here gets a hundred dollars, and they were all there. I was like, my. They were there, so. Uh, so yeah, they took a lot of pride. And the kids out there, every time we go up there, they just love it. And then that would roll into, um. Our veterans memorial that is on our. Okay, uh, the veterans memorial. So with the skate park. Um, I've been able to communicate with the BFW. We do. Stuff with them, and now they're bringing their expertise and their passion into the veterans memorial, so our community is growing in different branches throughout. I'm just trying to, yeah, trying to keep it quick, but here's our rendering. We have volunteers outside of community, outside with our group, helping us render this, working on it together, and. And those are the current projects and. Spent a lot of work and ran a lot of money, but. So thank you for that part. Yeah, that's awesome.
Okay, and I have been with the board for a little less than a year, and I just want to say that I'm super excited to be here and be the ears and the eyes to the community. Um. Prost has worked extremely hard this past year, uh, bringing in. Uh, trying to, while taking involvement from the community and, uh, doing outreach and expansion. And there is quite a few things that we. That we're looking at and have accomplished. Um. We've developed a fundraising committee. We volunteered, uh, we got volunteers group at the. Um, Winnick Park and new recreation programs so far this year have been Cyclone Go. Um, three BB adult basketball, indoor pickleball, and saddles and paddles. Uh, we've also had members of the community come to us and talk to us and express some agenda items that they're interested in. Those would be like. Pickleball, disc golf, um, ACA accessibility, um, WCP, the Veterans Memorial that Robert had talked about. Um. Events and collaboration. We've done quite a few things. We've, we've had the National Kids Park and Day Fishing Derby. The Park and Play Days, Arbor Day, Main Street Market, Fourth of July Trick or Treat Down Main Street, and Once Upon, uh, Once Upon a Field Day. So we're proud of those, um, things that we've already accomplished and those things that we are looking forward to accomplishing. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, current proposed projects right now, um, we're already kind of mentioned. Uh, we're looking at, uh, a lot of ADA accessibility stuff with our disc golf. Just getting access to the whole course. Um, one of our big ADA projects we want to get done, we want to get done soon, is a fishing dock. I think it's very important to be inclusive and to give a place where people want to live and play. And that just screams, you know, availability. Just make things available to people, and that's a big project we've been talking about for a long time. Um, the bike fix stations are ADA accessible, so all the tools come down, you can access them, you don't have to be. Right there. Um, it's a lot of use that we've been talking about ADA stuff. And including, we can go to the next one, the future projects. Um, some of our parks need to be redone. Viewpoint is out of date. Um, Centennial, I know is on the list after our master plan. We got a lot of lined up we want to do. Um, and that includes a lot of ADA stuff. Um, we need more room. We need. We need money too. I mean, that's what it boils down to. There's a lot of need. And hopefully that when we get the master plan done, uh, for the parks, you can see it. It'll be right there in front of you. You'll see. These are where we're missing. This is what we need to bring people here to Wellington to play. And we're doing the best we can now. I think Rex probably seen the highest numbers they've seen for a while. Um, the use of the parks, I mean, you guys drive around, you say it, you're in town. The use of the parks is huge, and we just want to keep doing that and make it better. Um, the future. So along the lines of the projects we have in mind, we would like to see. I guess a little bit ease of use of money, not doing all CIP. Not having to go through budget meetings like this, uh, that you guys are about to take on. Something where we have a budget line where we say, okay. We know this is a need. We'll do the best we can to come up with an idea. Um, and present it back to you guys, following the strategic plan, following our guidelines and give you things that we think the town needs. And we'd like to see. A little participation from the board towards us where we can. Give you the info that you need and. Make it easier because there's a lot of problems when it comes to getting contractors. And you know, if we can't pull the trigger within a few months or six months, they're gone. They're somewhere else. You know, the cost of things go up. We've seen that. Um, with the porn play even, I mean, just some things just need to be, the trigger needs to be pulled quicker. Limiting factors. So we have hardly any indoor space. This is our indoor space here. Doesn't provide for a whole lot, and we have a lot that we'd like to accomplish as far as rec programs that need indoor space. I know that's a big ask, and I know you guys are looking into the feasibility of a rec center, but. I mean, as far as our board has already talked and things that we've brought before, this is a big important step for the town. Just the programs that, that we can provide for the community is. I mean, tenfold of what we can do now. The vandalism, um. It's been a problem. I know you guys have heard about it. And it comes out of a budget that we have for, uh, maintenance and repair. Um. I don't know that we have good answers on how to combat that, but there needs to be a way to track it. There needs to be a way to. Over every year, have a line item of, this is how it's getting. So then when it hits the threshold of like, okay, well, now we need to implement something new to keep this from happening. Then we have, you know, the ability to look, or you have the ability to look at that in the future. Oh. Yeah. That's what I got.
That's a little hassle. Oh, there you go.
You can breathe. I'm just talking about, you know, what our goals are. Obviously, we talked to you guys before. We have this really huge list, right? Obviously, we love to accomplish our list. Um, each year we kind of try to bring it down to what we bring to you guys and to discuss. So, um. We're really excited about our current projects. I really appreciate you taking the time to listen. Is there questions for us?
Yeah, we have ten minutes for questions.
I do have a question for you. Um, the Wellington Community Park Memorial that's going in, is that taking over the BMX track? No, so the BMX track is still going to be available.
So the location is just. To the east of the dog park, just on the side of the actual path that's still there. Um, so there will, the, the BMX track will still be there.
Got it.
And on the, I don't know if I can say that real quick, on the, um, memorial. Um, it's kind of been set up in a way where it can be expandable. Um, and do things in portions where not all the budgeting has to be found out right away. We can get, you know, good footing, good, good, uh, memorial to be there. But then have the ability to add to it later as far as like a gathering area and, you know, different flower beds or things. And we're still looking at the community to give in, uh, input on that. Um. Cause we want to keep the community involved, and we think there's a way also to reach to sponsors and budgeting, um. And we, uh, it's stuff we've talked about in our meeting, so. Looking, looking forward to do that one.
I've got maybe a really quick one for you guys. I'm just curious, as far as the fishing docks go, if, if somehow we can make something like that happen. Do you have a plan for or have any concerns about the dock in the winter time and the lake freezing up, that sort of thing?
Um, yeah, so I actually, um, met a contractor out there, um, two weeks, well, a week from last Friday. About a week and a half ago, and, um. One of the proposed ideas is they've got the new ones that are on moorings and they just flow up and down. He came out and said, if it's the type, you obviously don't have to go for a specific contractor. Many can make this one, but this type is good for fluctuation. And we have shoulder months with the water that we get from our, our water rights that are fed into that, and. We do have fluctuation, and he walked up there and said, this is perfect for something like. And that, that map that was over that projection up there is what they sent us, so.
Awesome.
Um, all ADA accessible. Really, really sweet.
Good deal.
That's me. Just doing.
Um, I was just going to ask you to expound on the sponsorship opportunities in the financial and the fundraising committee. Like what? What is the goal and vision of implementing that? You, you touched on it for sponsors for Wellington, the, for the memorial site. But we've discussed, of course, if you want to share that, how that would be applicable to future projects as well. That's just, not just for this one, but. Continuing that effort and that model into the future.
Uh, the way I see it, um, we reach out to the community and. We haven't got into real deep discussions about it, but the committee would be involved with the projects that we're actually dealing with at the moment. Um, trying to get things wrapped up and then still having like foresight on what's coming up. Um, so we could offer opportunities for people in the future. Um, we just don't have. Everything concrete yet. We're trying to figure out, you know, if there's certain things we can offer for donorship levels, um, as far as. You know, signs or, or names on things, um, especially with the, um, the veterans memorial, you know, if somebody wants to. Have a loved one's name stamped in concrete, you know, and then what that looks like as far as. If we could get businesses to sponsor people and. Um, I think there's plenty of, uh, businesses in our community that have veterans in their business, um, past loved ones. Um. Community, yeah, community partners. I think there's. There's a lot to be dove into there. Uh, we don't have the details yet. It's probably in something else that we're gonna have to bring back to you guys at some point. Um, cause obviously we're just an advisory board, um, so we need, we need approval from you guys before, you know, anything gets done. Um, but we're just spitballing ideas, and then that committee would roll into every project that came up after, you know. We were looking at, a new park comes up with a new neighborhood, and we wanted to put benches out that weren't in the original plan, you know, what does that look like? If, um, people that have moved into the new neighborhood, you know, stuff like that, because we do have, um. Like the bench program and the trees, um, now that we would like to. Kind of roll some of that idea into sponsoring things for parks and, and for our open spaces and trails.
The, uh, the one thing that's worked really well with the skate park, and I would like to implement this with other, um. Activities and hobbies was, um, when I talked to my crew and the people that I know and trying to raise money was like, I, I'm able to get. Thirteen hundred dollars from the town this year, do what we want to do, how can we get money? And it seems like the more the town gives a little, the more I can give back. It's very hard to start with zero and be like. I want to go build something at the skate park, who wants to start giving me money? Most people are like, I'll just build out my house, and I have to deal with the town. But if the town is offering up stuff. But we could say the goal was five thousand dollars. If the town's offering up twenty-five hundred, it's easier to come. And meet halfway with it than start from zero to get all the way up here. And the disc golf people are a great one. They came to our meeting before, and they're all a bunch of go-getters. They want to. Put new platforms on, build, you know, do, put in more posts and stuff, but they don't know where to start, where to go. They're the same place I was three years ago. And now I have the communication, I can talk to them, so I could lead them, get a, the town has, you know, we have a small nest egg for you guys to start working with. What do you need? Well, that's not enough. Go find some money, bring it in, and once it starts growing, it just keeps going and going and going, but it had, we have to, I believe, time to give a little. And then people will come back, tenfold. And this, this gave our perfect proof there. Yeah.
Perfect. I have one more question, if that's okay.
Yeah, I'll do it. Get, just if you have any questions?
Yes, so I did, um, one thing I didn't want to highlight, and I just, you mentioned, we're just spitballing ideas. That's great. I just talked about this in the interview we just did. This is what I want from you guys, is new ideas, new things coming in for Billy to consider, for us to consider, so keep that up. Um, on your idea of us being more involved or having a little bit of a budget to work with, have you guys started thinking through what that could look like in terms of logistics? I, I like the idea, just wonder what your thoughts are and how logistically that would work.
Yeah, can I feel this? I mean, whoever, right?
Probably have this conversation in about two minutes.
Um, it was at, at the advice of pros for me to ask for more of my budget for minor park improvement, so those are the. Kind of the small to medium-sized projects that might need capital improvement, might not necessarily kind of floating in there. So the idea would be. Some of these on here that are presented to you, um, we would go. Reach out as far as we can to getting them to where they need to be, and, and then to the finish line would be the funding. We would have that pool of funding available. You know, it would be within the purchasing policy, or if it's over what I can spend, it would be a presentation to you to say, are you okay with me spending that at, at the advice of pros that this is what. You know, and we probably would come to you and say, hey, we're looking to do, let's just say, one of the, one of the things that was brought up was the disc golf, right? We're looking to partner with this call. They've got some, some people that are backing them from the local disc golf club as well as the local distributor here. Um, they're looking to finish this project off, and the town would need to use some of that funds, twenty thousand dollars. Is that okay with you? Here's the entire plan. And you guys would approve that, but that, having that budget there. In that minor park improvement, um, above what I'm pretty much annually using just for the minor park improvements would give them. The okay to start.
Their own discretionary fund, basically.
Basically, but it would, it wouldn't be just like a strict discretionary. It would be in line with what we're trying to accomplish, bringing projects to you, but you, you'll see most of them on here as they update bi-annually.
That's a good question. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Um, so I know it's been mentioned by a few times now, and something that I was curious about and looking at is I know you guys are having problems with attendance on some of. Your guys' board members. Is this something that we can have a discussion with on? Is it? Because I know that they draft, but we approve pretty much anything that happens as far as what gets changed in the bylaws. But if there's a member at large that can be added to kind of help support when others are not attending these meetings. Um, because we don't want to disclude, but we also want people showing up for your meetings. So trying to figure out. How we can aid in doing something like that, if it would be of benefit to have that for you guys.
Yeah, you know, we, we do have, um, some really passionate members, um, right now. We have an opening, which we're really excited to fill. Um, it is hard when we don't have a forum, as you guys know, um, it's hard to, to get things done. I'm open to conversation and, and, and finding out what that looks like, I think, um. Working with you guys on that and, and through Billy, we can figure it out. I'm not sure on the answers tonight, but, um, I think we're definitely open to how we can. Can get more active.
Just speak on my behalf, um. I've been very fortunate to be able to work at the skate park, and with doing that, I'm. Got more involved, you know, I'm now with pros, and I am trying to work just as hard. For their ideas and their stuff is, I want to work for my own in hopes that that'll work as hard for me. And I think if we get people in there with their ideas and their thoughts and. Just give them a little something that just makes people excited, and it just grows and grows and grows. But when things get stale and nothing gets done, and you're waiting around and blah, blah, blah. People get bored and you just say, uh, it's not worth it, not worth my time. And, you know, I mean, that's just the truth. It's just the truth. Nothing's getting done. It's hard to stick around, and I think that's what people feel, probably the biggest problem.
Another board that we have that has attendance concerns, and it's, you know, they need and have to have a forum. They have alternate members. So if and when, you know, people can attend, they are able to be a voting member. So, I mean, that could be an idea that we throw out there, consider.
Yeah, I think the same thing, then, and they, you know, they can still engage in, they would. Engage in common, just as a member of the public, but then if someone's missing, then they would actually vote. Yeah, I think that's a separate conversation, but that's a great idea.
And you have to succeed to let grow, see where we can take it. Um, awesome. So our question, time is up. Unless you have something, remember time, okay? Um, thank you guys very much for the presentation, taking time to visit us this evening, all of your hard work. You guys are important to the community. Parks Direct is important, so to keep people healthy and happy, we need that here, so thank you to each and every one of you. For coming, so thanks.
Thank you for the time.
Next, uh, we're gonna have fifteen minutes to spend with Mr. Cody Bird, and. Thank you. Oh. Okay.
Well, I presented some information with the last work session. Um, I'm happy to go back over any of that that's, uh, necessary, but I don't want to recreate the wheel. Um, we shared a few highlights, um, as evidenced on the slide there. Um, as a reminder, the planning department is requesting one additional, uh, planning position, helping workload and customer service. Uh, that's positioned, it's been requested for, this is the third year now, uh, so we're hoping that that can be approved. Um, we. We expect if that is approved, and if we can afford it, there would be some, uh, incremental increases in line items like professional development, computer costs and things of that nature to support that new position. Um, we are planning to replace two computer machines that, uh. Uh, have aged out and are beginning to show signs of, uh, malfunctions that need to be replaced. Um, and probably the, the biggest. New changes that were recommended or proposed by the planning department, um, were funds for, um, uh, software to support our development review services to help streamline that effort. Um, that's, we're recommending, research we've done, talking to some of the software companies, um, includes. Um, a one-time fairly substantial startup cost to get those services and platforms built and, and tailored to our needs, and then an ongoing. Uh, annual cost for continuing the service. Um, and then. I think probably where we started to leave off at the end of the last work session was, um, Humane Society Services. The town has an existing contract with Laramie County Humane Society to, um, provide, um, in all the cart style. Um, as needed basis for animal control, and most of those services have to be referred to them by the town or LCSO. And what they proposed a couple of years ago was a joint contract with other front-range communities that would, um. Kind of share those, the, the overhead costs of equipment, vehicles, personnel, and provide, uh, broader coverage. That residents could also reach out to them directly to address animal control concerns instead of referring them through town code enforcement staff to, uh, Laramie Humane Society. Um, so we explored that contract. We think that there is value in, in obtaining those additional services from Laramie Humane, Laramie County Humane Society. Um, and so we've included that as part of our proposed budget for twenty twenty-four to pursue that option.
Um. First question, that would help us quite a bit with liability, things of that nature, right? If, right, if we don't have. Obviously, the town staff to be able to do something like that for the main society. Um, and that protects us in that sense and then gives us the service that we need. Um, in many ways, we don't have current coverage, correct?
It, yeah, correct, and, and we certainly need lean on their expertise and their equipment and services currently. The challenge we often run into is the lag between. Having a town staff person contact them, explain the situation, have them respond. Versus having a resident say, this is the problem. There's a dog at large, and we need assistance to get that under control. Now. Just the chain of communications eats up a lot of time, and sometimes the opportunity is lost. Also would help with after-hours communications if something's occurring at seven o'clock in the evening when the town staff isn't available. Or on the weekends, it has a broader, uh, net to cover those other gaps.
Uh, so we have ten minutes for questions. Start with Tristan Mason.
Um, Cody, I was just curious if you might be able to give us some quick explanation behind, I, I know you had mentioned some professional services, and there's another line item on here, reimbursable. Services that are pretty big increases from twenty twenty-two. Can you just kind of tell me what? You know, what, what, what all that encompasses?
Yeah, so the, the reimbursable services is, in twenty twenty-two are actuels. We don't spend the money if we don't need to.
Sure.
The reimbursable services account, that's for, um, contracting services that we, as a town, employ. A third-party vendor to do a specialized review. Selecting development review practices. Um, if we, one of the ones that we commonly use is, um, a third-party, uh, PTOE, professional transportation engineer. Um, we contract that service to do a detailed review on traffic impact studies. And when we, when we encumber those funds for that contract, we then turn around and we invoice that to the developer, uh, to recover those costs. So it's really a pass-through, money in, money out. Uh, or in this case, money out, money in, um, but that's a direct one-to-one. We just try to make sure that we have enough range of, of budget there to employ the services necessary. To cover those costs if we need them. If we don't need it, we don't spend it.
Sure, okay.
Um, the, the other land you asked about was professional services. Again, we, we generally, we try really hard not to use that, but we do need something there if, if the event comes up. We've used that in the past for GIS services where we don't have in-house expertise. To build the models and do the mapping exercises that we need. We use some of that for land use code, zoning map updates was, were some of those examples. Um, if we need to do specific targeted outreach, um, if we have to employ services for other unique, um, aspects that's not covered by. Uh, a development proposal, then we'd have those funds available. In twenty twenty-three, some of the, some of that funding is going to pay Baker Tilly contract for those services as well as legal services for land use. Things that would be on what the developer would have been required to pay for.
Sure, okay, okay.
Yes, um, so I sent, um, Patty some questions related to the humane society contract, and I was curious if you had had. Some of those answers.
So do you want to talk about those questions so that so everybody knows what the questions are that you?
I think I CC'd everyone in the email.
Okay, I'll let me go back.
Feel free and remind me, though, if you want to just give a quick summary.
This was, so this was a discussion related to the contract that we're entering into for the humane society is eight AM to five PM, correct?
Right, so I did respond to that, and it is eight, what they have explained. I'm going back to my email. Um, Thursday through Monday, eight consecutive hours, Monday, so Thursday through Monday, eight AM to five PM. With an officer available on Tuesday and Wednesday for emergency services.
So who would handle the other emergency services?
Um, they would, they would. The humane society, they would, they would just provide. They don't have somebody designated for Wellington on those two off days. But they have officers available. They could come if somebody would call and request emergency services.
Would we receive additional cost for that?
Um, more than likely. I don't see, I did ask that question. I'm not seeing a response on that one. Um, let me look.
Does the contract specifically say one way or the other whether we're charged outside of those hours?
It doesn't.
I'm sorry, I was gonna say, we don't have a contract because we haven't, we we can't enter into a contract, uh, the new proposal.
The proposed, the proposals they sent us, does it specify whether we pay outside of those hours?
It's a scope of services and it doesn't specify that those are additional charges, we can certainly follow up with that question and get more detailed information, but they do provide twenty-four seven. Coverage for emergency services and that's something that currently is a little bit lacking and it takes a little coordination to get that. Um, but we can certainly follow up and get more detailed information as part of a, an actual proposed contract to to further outline the specified terms.
So, and the other one was my main concern goes off of calls, it, cause this is based off an average of calls over a year. So what my concern is, is the average calls, calls go into the town of Wellington now. And the town of Wellington answers them when they can, when they can't, they leave a message. If we have people calling twenty times a day for loose dogs. That average changes this next year and that contract could very well increase greatly from all of the calls going to the Laramie County Humane Society. Instead of getting filtered through the town of Wellington.
Liability drops though, right?
What are we liable for? I I, I understand the liability piece, do we have like a contractual? Requirement to the residents of Wellington that we are responsible for residents' dogs, I I.
It's code enforcement, so it would be our code.
So, so if, so if my dog goes out and bites the neighbor, the town of Wellington's liable, I don't think the town of Wellington is liable.
Happens is, if we, if somebody calls town hall and we don't respond or act. Or let's say one of Cody's people, you know, it looks like a friendly dog and so they're just trying to help. Contain the loose dog until the humane society can get there. The the workers comp doesn't cover them because they're not trained for animal enforcement, if that makes sense. Reason why L C S O doesn't pick up dogs, right, because their workers comp probably doesn't cover them. If they're picking up dogs because that's not something, it's like a total different. So I think it's because, you know, if we try and handle somebody's dog or we pick it up or we try and temporarily. Hold it for them, you know, like it it is a friendly dog, let's just say dies of a heart attack.
And then in the sense.
Then we're responsible for it.
I mean, we could be responsible for negligence on the town's portion for not keeping up with the code. So, so we need, we need enforcement of some sort.
No, I understand that, so I'm saying, yeah, I agree, we shouldn't be out, Cody's team should not be handling dogs, but our current way is that we're made aware of it. We make Laramie County Humane Society aware of it, they go out and deal with it on those. And I'm saying if we follow that process, how are we liable? If they're slow getting there and the dog does something, we're not liable for that person's dog's actions. Now, we're liable as they tell us and we're just like, yeah, we're not gonna tell them or we don't do anything, me, I I.
Well, as long as we have the agreement, me, so. Yeah, I feel like we have a lot of parking lot items for this contract in particular, so I think I might recommend that we look at the proposed contract, maybe have legal review, talk to Sersa. Outline all those kind, unless you've already done.
No, I, no, I've done a couple, a little bit of this, I've also talked to um, Laramie County Humane Society, they were not available to come tonight. So, we'll have them come, if this is something I wanted to kind of see what the reaction was tonight, if we need more information, they are happy to come out and.
It's a big increase.
It is, it's a significant increase and, you know.
It will grow up a lot more next year.
And I don't know how they, how that would be adjudicated with the other municipalities, I don't know how they come up with that formula, so. I did reach out to them again today, right before this meeting, they are still willing to come and and present at a trustee meeting, so I will just get that schedule.
And in that packet that they gave us, it explains how they.
We got two minutes left. Let's see, Danny.
Um, outside of the specifics that have already been asked, there's not a lot of increases in specific line items. Um, and my concern on that is obviously in two thousand twenty four, we're expecting a much higher volume in your department, is my assumption, just based off of. What I hope will happen is, do you think that's accommodated or planned for within the software, is something to be more efficient or? Um, cause I imagine every single item with more volume of more work would require significant increases for every line item, but. I was just curious if that was being accommodated by the software, I know I talked to you briefly about software the last time we talked together, but. What are your thoughts on that?
You, you know, most of our line items like um, legal recording fees, printing costs and things like that, we do expect a slight increase on just by volume and type of. Projects, but nothing that wouldn't be accommodated in the proposed budget, in terms of uh, um, staff hours to accommodate that, that's why we're requesting the additional position. But outside of that position request, I I don't really reasonably expect to see. Increases in every line item as a result of volume, typically that's, it's mostly a time. Uh, issue and that's one of the things we're requesting the software. Um, to help make that time more efficient, and there's some overlap there in working with. Um, our engineering division and some of our other departments where they're also overlapping and and intersecting with the. Development review process to help make that more efficient for them as well.
Okay, so people time new position and more efficient time.
Real quick, the inspection fees, how many, if that's for the building permits, right, for safe bill, correct, what are we projecting on that?
So to come up with the the numbers for building inspection fees, we've, I've calculated that based on a three-year average for number of permit by permit type. And average valuation over that three-year timeframe. Every year is a little bit different, material costs change, uh, market changes, but we've looked at that for all of our permit type categories, looking back for three-year averages. The two areas where we don't use the averages are new residential home starts and new commercial construction.
Oh, so that does not factor that in?
It's, it factors it in, but I don't use the averages for those numbers. For residential starts for this budget proposal, I'm using an assumed seventy residential. Permits, that's a little bit of a stretch because some of those projects aren't yet entitled. Um, but we expect that they will be to where we could issue some permits in the end of twenty twenty four for those new projects. Um, and then for commercial, in years past, we've kind of just. Made the assumption that if we have a new commercial start, which is not always guaranteed, sometimes. Timing is such that they might get entitlement in one year and pull a permit the next, so it's kind of hard to predict. But for budget purposes this year, we do have development projects. Um, that we feel pretty confident about, so we we've included two new commercial projects. Um, in the um, projected revenue fees and the revenue fees for building inspections are in part a pass through that. If we don't issue the permits, we don't have our safety, my contractor expenses, so if permit volume is down, revenues are down, but so are our costs. So it it's a little bit of a pass through on a portion of that and then the town retains the revenue. Okay.
Perfect, so our time's up, but I will extend it to two minutes per individual, so uh, Tristan McDonald, remember ten, do you think? Trusty Gator.
So, and the two questions, the hopefully, the first one should be pretty quick, do you have a way, so with the uh, reimbursable services? Because as you mentioned, that's just basically as we charge it. I know in the budget, it's just like a set number, right, the budget is the five twenty-five, do you have a way that you track that internally to make sure? That if other things go up, you don't pull the funds from that reimbursable expenses to cover it over somewhere else?
I, we don't use that line for anything but reimbursable expenses.
Okay, sure, but in the overall budget, you don't, cause I know sometimes we'll shift money, but in the budget, right, we approve the five twenty-five and then if money's needed elsewhere, it gets pulled elsewhere within that five twenty-five. If one's over, another one's under can cover the overage, but you don't pull it out of that money.
Correct, yeah, we don't, we don't use reimbursable line items, the reimbursable services line item for anything but reimbursable services.
Perfect, um, the second question is what? Wh- what are we doing currently that this software license and the software that you were looking to bring on? How are you currently accomplishing what is happening that the software is going to do, that that's the part I still don't understand exactly, what, what are we doing today? And how is the software going to change that process?
Currently, we have a series of multiple spreadsheets, we have word documents and we have emails. And that is not the most efficient way to communicate when you have multiple reviewers reviewing the same set of plans. Um, and so what has happened is we, in those inefficiencies, something either falls through the cracks. We missed a communication and didn't realize it was pending review comments and what a software system would do is workflow those steps. So that it is in one place, you don't have to go searching for something, it streamlines the communication chain. So that all reviewers see the same documents at the same time, see the same review comments coming back, see the the gen, or the the timeline for review of that project. And anyone who, anyone who looks at it can look at that software and know exactly where it's at. What's pending, what the next steps are, so that we don't have to have extra communications.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you, Cody.
Thank you.
All right, the next section we'll move on to is going to be the review of the five-year C I P. This will be behind on, so we're gonna keep this one, this whole section to thirty-five minutes.
Bob and I'll kick this off. Um, as we probably can speak to the bulk of it. Um, but starting with the the water fund, many of these things I realize is really small on the screen, it's.
Just real quick, well, obviously, I'm Bob Gowing, that's meeting Smith, but we also have our um, kind of senior project managers back here, Dave Meyer. And Nathan, he were two, we're managing most of the projects that you'll have questions about, so we can rely on them. It would just be a pass. We'll, we'll pass it, right?
Um, many of what you see on the screen in the very small type, um, you've seen in the past. Um, with with a couple of uh, modification and changes, but the bulk of what you're seeing through twenty twenty four are things that you're. Likely already aware of, mainly headed by, of course, the expansion project that's happening. Uh, and the remaining funds that are expected to be extended in twenty twenty four on that project. Um, you also are familiar with the rehab of our potable water tanks, that's something that Dave uh, Meyer brought through to you all. Um, managing some overall cost savings thereby combining two projects into one mobilization all at one time. It's another one of the large projects on there. Um, I did wanna um, bring a little bit of attention to um, this ongoing, uh, it's called automated metering infrastructure, they're kind of in the middle of the page. That one is, has been rebranded. Um, previously, it was titled Water Efficiency Program, um. Not, not exactly what this line item is about, this line is really about an infrastructure replacement program and networking build. To build out our automated metering infrastructure, um, I do wanna, there's a couple of things here, one, uh, we are very hopeful to be applying for Bureau of Reclamation Water Smart. Uh, efficiency grant, um, that would be coming to you guys for approval, uh, this fall, once that grant actually opens, the EPA is eligible. For rather Bureau of Reclamation's been slow to open that up. Um, we are applying for five hundred thousand dollars, really the out-of-pocket costs uh, for the town for that effort, should we be aware of the grant, should only be about two hundred thousand dollars. To complete the meter replacement and then build out the infrastructure, connect our software, our billing software platform to that. Um, if we are unsuccessful in that grant application, then it would be. Potentially spread out across even more years than you see here in order to be fiscally responsible with a little dollars in that fund. Um, and uh, two new ones down at the bottom, um, there are, is a skated, skater telemetry system upgrade where we've had some communication difficulties from. Um, in-town water facilities out to the water plant facilities, so we're needing to upgrade the radios. Um, that are with, uh, for that telemetry. And then uh, some P L C replacements, programmable logic controllers, uh, there's four. Um, no longer replaceable or serviceable uh, P L Cs that we have in place also throughout. All just existing and and pieces of the infrastructure that will stay in place, it's not related to the project, the expansion project, um, and that's where those come into play. So with those highlighted, um, I'd love to answer any questions that you might have on that piece.
Tristan Mason?
Um, I think I'm good on this one.
Chris Teets?
Um. I have something, okay, so this is where I had sent an email out, um, trying to find out information about metering systems that residents can use at home. To monitor their water usage, notify them in real time on their cell phones if a leak is detected or they're seeing excessive water use. And one thing I had found out is, I know we had discussions and then found out it was only on a commercial site for monitoring sewer. Outputs to the water treatment facility, I wasn't aware that it wasn't on the incoming side as well when we had that discussion. Is there a device that can be looked at and possibly approved for residents to purchase? And if they're seeing massive differences besides what they're using in their water. And what they're being billed in their water, kind of like what we talked about for the commercial side of things. Is there a way residents can submit that and say, my numbers are this and your numbers are this? There's a huge discrepancy. Is there a way to do that, a machine that could be, cause there's multiple out on the market, is there one that the town could decide? Is an approved unit that they would trust that unit of measurement?
Um, without knowing more about the the pieces of equipment you're talking about, my, the short answer would likely be no. Um, the, it was, we pay a lot of money um, to develop an infrastructure program that's in place that are reliable meters that can tie into the system that are all the same meters with with the. Radio structure, infrastructure in place, right, that um, that are calibrated, um, supported, um, uh, warranted. You know, a variety of things that go along with that. Now, where I've heard of usefulness of that, so, so in the end, when we roll out a full A M I infrastructure piece. If we are, if the board is palatable to and it's something that we're interested in, we would have real-time. Alert notifications internally and there are are kind of add-on pieces you can have with the software program. That would allow users to log in and see their water use real time. Um, you know, the, and and to send alert notifications automatically to your cell phone and that kind of thing, if you've got a, you know, I I received one. Um, in my residence for a hose that got left overnight, actually this summer. Um, you know, it's a continuous consumption notification, so we would have that ability in place. Um, and where I've heard of folks, you know, trying to utilize a system like that is when there's not like what we currently have, they're looking to be more aware of their day-to-day, throughout the day usage. And they don't have access to that, it's not generally in a mechanism that's to dispute per se, um, a a a month's bill.
I mean, just to add, um, you asked, what kind of equipment could someone use if they wanted to double-check our meter reads? Would pretty much be the same meter that we're installing, our meters are ninety-nine plus accurate every single time we've tested them. Uh, they don't fail, but that's the standard that we've adopted for accuracy and reliability for our meter system and I would suggest that. That would be the meter that someone would have, would want to install somewhere in their yard, I suppose, if they wanted to backcheck our, our meters.
Got it, so the portable ones that actually attack, attached to the water main is the one that I was referring to, there's a few of them out. Um, so, but no, it was just something I was kind of looking at that and I think it, when people can see that they actually are using. This consumption in real time, it's a wake-up call to say, okay, maybe I'm doing something. That, you know, is, I am using this much water and I hate to say people don't trust the government, but. A lot of people don't trust the government and I was just trying to find a way for people to observe it. And either find out, yes, I'm using this much water or be able to say, hey, there's something going on here because. It's saying I'm using this and I was out of town for three out of the four weeks. That it says I use twice as much as I did last month and I was home all month. It was just an idea of something I was trying to help figure out where it increases that. Faith and transparency and people that do not have certain faith and transparency as far as their water. Goes right now anyways, so I was just, I was curious if it would end some complaints and ongoing questions, but. That was the only thing I had.
Just real quick, the last two items there, the uh. Element uh, metry system, and is that a need or a want? I mean, if we have to cut back on a budget, is that something we could cut back on or is it necessary for a new facility?
The telemetry system is a need, so we have failing, we have had some failures in communications. That um, when that happens, we're not able to continue to utilize the nano filtration skid in town because we can't see it. See it through the skater process that we have in place because it's not communicating back to the plant. So that, that's a a need that we've been, uh, you know, we get callouts in the middle of the night, have to go shut things off. Um, because we've lost, uh, a windstorm will knock the telemetry out, so an upgraded system there is a need.
Right, that would, how about the?
The P L C upgrade, um, so the the risk is that they are no longer serviceable, so, um. If they fail, they fail and in a lot of these cases, it means that we are, um, we're, a process is failing because it's being controlled by a P L C. So we don't, and and we don't have. We're, a process is failing because it's being controlled by a P L C. So we don't, and, and we don't have. Yeah, but they can't be serviced any longer even.
So that's pretty much a need too.
Yeah.
Um, thank you so much for pursuing the grant. That is very exciting and wonderful news. What was the previous approved grant? Is it for the Buffalo Creek Booster? What, we received the grant?
We have a previous grant that's in the sewer fund for the lift station.
It's worth, oh, lift station, okay. All right, yeah, just exciting news about the grant. Thank you for pursuing that.
Yes, I did have a question. We have the water treatment plant admin building is not included with the plant's expansion. So why is that separated out? Cause that is, man, that's part of the plan that we're expanding right now. That was one of those items that we value engineered out and to get the budget under control. We made a lot of cuts on this project and we haven't always come back and kept you guys up to date on those. But this was one of them. So we're going to try our best to figure out how to use the existing filter building. And it's not cheap to remodel a building from a filtration process into an office. Or lab kind of process. So we intentionally pushed that out in the five-year a little bit. Once we get through this dip and find balance. And we hope to still get that done because the working out of an industrial space for office space. And, and lab work and SCADA systems is really not ideal.
Got it. Okay. And then I also noticed on, on here, did we finally get everything fixed with the bulk plant? Has that been upgraded fully with the new systems in place? Cause that's not on here anymore.
Close. Uh, the last piece in place is to install the new kind of brains. So the, the money-making taking machine. And I'll, I'll be honest, we were kind of giving some time to our financial team to get through this. Budget process, cause it's gonna entail ensuring that the credit card provider, our billing system. And our, our financial software systems are all tied together. So that's really the last piece to install. We already have it. Purchases been made. No more costs to incur for that project. It's just not in place yet.
All the underground equipment's been installed. It's just the vault or anything's just ready to put this new machine on. It's not, it doesn't work the way you want it to work without the networking back to Cassel and, you know, and all that.
So is that gonna be done in this year?
That's, that's the plan. What's the plan?
Are you on your cell phone?
Um, again, the two biggest things that you'll see on here on this, just keep in mind, the sewer fund, the design and engineering services. And the construction services are in two different G Ls, as opposed to the water fund that's in one. So you see that across two. This is where it comes into play, the viewpoint lift station that you're speaking of. This is the full costs for the upgrades and expansion of that lift station. So what's included in the budget, that six hundred and eight thousand dollars grant funding would be included in the revenue, revenue side, right? But we see the full expenses here. Um, then we have the, the next largest thing on here is a rehabilitation. To our orbital system, which is our, our oxidation ditch for the treatment process. So it's our, our main workhorse out there on the existing facility. That system's never been brought down. And inspected, cleaned and rehabbed. And so as soon as we get the new facility running. And there's gonna be a little bit of a timeline there that we need to do it when our loads to the plant, the hydraulic. Loads and nutrient loads to the plant are still at a level that can be treated with just the new facility while we bring down, essentially bring down the existing facility. Get it inspected, rehab the equipment. And the numbers that you see here are conservative. This is, you know, this is not assuming catastrophic concrete failures that we'll find, cause we don't think that's there. But it is assuming that we need to rehab every piece of equipment that's in it.
Unfortunately, this is a piece of equipment that's, how deep is that? Twelve, fifteen feet deep? Full wastewater. Those guys would know. And we, we can't drain it, right? It's, it's a biologic process and our biology, a lot of the biology is in the ditch or the orbital. And we just literally can't drain it to get down there, look at the base of some of the equipment and the condition of the concrete down there. So this is a, we believe, a pretty conservative number. And we've made some assumptions about what would need to get replaced when we get in there, but this making said. We just, we just don't know. The concrete may or may not look like down there yet.
What is the non-conservative number?
No, I said.
Non-conservative number. I'm just preparing for the worst, so when.
Conservative is kind of the worst. Not quite the worst, but bad.
Got it.
A bad number.
That would be that we would come into that, but that's how. Until we know. Um, yeah, those are the largest what you see here. Do you have questions on? Oh, and actually a new here that you'll see is this roof replacement for existing buildings. So in the process of. Providing a great deal of focus on the expansion efforts and when the processes that are going in, there's something called maintenance on existing buildings that we're maintaining. And I will say through the wet winter and spring that we had, we identified some leaks. So this is to re-roof, kind of spreading it out over three years, starting with the one that's most needed. And then getting through all three of them to re-roof those existing buildings so we can keep our equipment and labs in. Good condition for the long term.
No, I think I'm good.
Um, I just wanted to refer back to the water front really quick. I wanna say we did a tour of your facility. And we did walk through what the lab looks like at that water treatment plant. And I mean, there was a geode hanging out the window. And you guys need proper vent hoods installed. So that one, honestly, I would love to argue it. Cause I'm a penny pincher, but I've seen that building that I, there's no argument that you will find from me there. And I especially said that I agreed it needed to be worked on when we all went and toured the area down there. So the only thing that concerns me is I understand C I P projects operate a little bit differently. Then from the general ledger. So when we're looking at all of these increases and possibilities. Do we, will we see water rates change with this income? Will you see water rates increase if we need to make up?
Are we talking about the water fund?
Back in the sewer fund.
Well, either of them.
Well, we're right now, so we're talking about sewer fund right now.
Got it. So I guess sewer fund.
So, you know, we're not to that point in our presentation. I think we're gonna be talking about projected revenues and stuff next week.
Got it.
But I, I think we should also note that we have also cut projects out of the sea. So if you compared this C I P to the C I P two years ago. You would see significantly less projects in both of these funds.
Got it.
Chris, we can, I presume you already answered my question that the orbital, orbital. Uh, process that we got gonna be happening here, that's a necessity, correct? It has to be done.
Something is almost certainly gonna need to be done.
Right. And with it, with the regular sewer coming online, this is the most opportune time to start it.
It's really the first time that we can drain it and take a look at it in detail and really evaluate. There's a lot of equipment down there. It's been sitting in wastewater for fifteen years, so.
But if, but if there became a real budget crunch, is that something we could put off for a year?
Yeah.
It's possible. It would be. Just a cold and.
We hope we don't have to go there, but I mean, that could possibly be a contingency.
Yes. And in consideration of that would be, of course, escalation, right? So tack on three percent a year, probably.
Correct.
For each of you go out. There would also be some removal. So we would, we would save the mobilization costs. Cause we would have staff, the construction staff on site to be able to do it at the end of the project. So it's also cost savings. To, I, I don't know, twenty thousand dollars to remove a team. Yeah.
Dave, Dave and Nathan have worked very closely with Mols, the contractor that we have out there now. The plan is kind of intricately, when the new processes come on, what's the right window to drain the orbital to get a look at? What that work might consist of, and Mols has given us pricing for. Several different alternatives in terms of things we might have to do.
So worst-case scenario, possibly, but we don't wanna do it if at all possible.
Yes, and we will know more when we get a look at it.
Right.
Right, which will happen next year.
Thank you.
She did.
Uh, I really love the strategic timing for all the oversight sizing reimbursements. That's just like a testament to great planning. So thank you very much. And I see the grant one, so thank you for extending that to me in advance.
Yeah. Uh, so the only question I had is, it kind of goes back to the same thing with the. Admin buildings is why the orbitals weren't included as part of the water reclamation, cause I'm assuming they're not gonna be standalone. They're part of the expanded plant. So why was that not part of the project cost we took out to loan?
Well, that is, they are, they're not, I mean, they're part of the existing plant. So it's the existing plant infrastructure. And so just like, you know, three years in advance of planning, when this planning effort went into place. There are considerations that are.
So were those just not included? We didn't think about doing anything with those when we were going through the project or, cause I mean, I'm assuming they're not. The fact that they have a separate line, I'm assuming they're not considered part of the project.
No, they're not.
So like question is, is why not? Because it's, it's all one plant. It's not like we're gonna have two plants up there, right? We have the old plant is getting upgraded to our new sewer plant. And I'm assuming these two orbitals are part of that expanded capacity that we're gonna have, correct? They're, when we talk about the, or they're not.
Well, I mean, they're the existing capacity.
Yeah, they're.
So, you know, we're, we're doubling capacity, so that in, in planning out, this is our new plant has X capacity. That includes these two orbitals.
Yes.
Or I don't know how many there are.
These orbitals, when we functioning.
Will be functioning.
The life of this.
Okay.
Yes.
So why were they not included as part of the main projects?
Um, well, it, I'm not gonna say it was an afterthought, but the orbitals were functioning okay. And it's been in the last year or two that we started to have kind of more problems with the orbitals.
Okay.
And. It just, we couldn't get a look at it anyway. So in, in essence, the plant gave us the ability to drain the orbitals. So that we could actually get in there and take a look at it. And we thought, well, if we're gonna do that, we really need to inform. You and the community that there could be some cost attached to this.
Sure. Okay. No, I appreciate that. It's just, it's, you know, when we talk about, okay, we're approving this fifty million dollar project, but all of a sudden, well, actually, it's really fifty-two million, fifty, whatever. Like I get things changed, so just trying to understand why it was separated out.
It, the design assumption back then was that they would continue to function.
Okay.
And the focus was on the new design more so than maintenance-related items.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Off to the next step.
The street fund. A lot of these projects probably look familiar to you. They're ongoing things that we do. Uh, next year's the last year for the Old Town Street Project, which we, Nathan just got finished up there right outside of Harrison. And all over Old Town. Um, preventative maintenance used to be called the crack seal, preventative maintenance, which is more snazzy name. The pavement condition assessment, we've kind of been kicked, we've already kicked this back a year or two, but in, in a general sense. We need to get out there. We all know that there's a lot of streets, especially those subdivisions that were built before. Oh, the mid two thousand, say it's two thousand thirteen or so, when we changed our street standards to require flash. Um, the Noel Wellington Point viewpoint, there's a whole lot of subdivisions where. If anybody who drives through them sees that the pavement's failing in many, many spots and almost all those spots. Or where the services go to the house. And the compaction didn't happen adequately back then. Know that we had appropriate inspection service, you know, inspection. Uh, back then on these and oversight for those construction projects. And those have failed. And you can see, you'll see the curb doing this. That's probably right on top of a water sewer service where it just settled. And literally see the trench from the main to the curb and maybe even through the sidewalk sometimes. So that's gonna be a very expensive project and we want to make sure that. We have a system of identifying all the problems, coming up with the most efficient solutions. Prioritizing those solutions frankly, based on, you know, needs in the overall sense. And that's what that paving condition assessment is about. There's a lot of consultants, not consultants, but firms. That will do this for you. They pick up these big rigs where they're taking pictures of paving and pictures of, of everything in the right ways. They drive through and they, it kind of automatically goes into a database. So frankly, we think we've probably kind of overstated the cost of this. Uh, I expect, I expect to see some savings on that, but that's what that project's about. The highway one intersection improvement. So as everybody knows, we, we started that project. Three years ago or so in-house, C dot volunteered to take that on and, and, and move that forward. But C dot doesn't pay for everything associated with the project. And, and usually they don't pay for curving gutter. You know, pay for sidewalk, they don't pay, pay for like town signage. So we're anticipating some kind of welcomed Wellington signage, directional signage. Uh, some accoutrement to go with, with that project. And so that's just. Really just programmed money for some of those kind of improvements that we may want to add on to that C dot project. Uh, the epoxy street striping, we previously deferred this one. This is a long line striper. The paint that we use now with our little, little, little striper, maybe you guys have seen it out there. It's like a lawnmower.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's cute. And it, it won't handle epoxy paints. Epoxy paints will last. You can use two times as long as those kind of more builder grade, I'll call them paints, that you can shove through that machine. So this would be a contract for someone with the right striping machine to come in and do some long line striping on the arterials. And the collectors in town, which they probably have noticed a lot of that paint started to deteriorate. Cleveland Avenue improvements, I think most of us are familiar with that one. That's the. And curving gutter, hard skate, potential parking improvements and drainage project for Cleveland Avenue. As it goes through Old Town. Uh, we know that the grant monies to fund this. Are two point one six million that. Public Works and Kelly and the admin staff worked together to, to chase that money down. So that's been approved. There are a lot of conditions that come with that, so we won't do that process now. Uh, transportation master plan. Um, Cody promised that he would help me explain this one, but this would basically be. Uh, a typical master plan where you look at needs and goals in terms of. All types of transportation services to the community, primarily streets, but also multimodal and things of that sort. And identify, can identify the, the choke points or areas for improvement. And assign high-level budgets to that so that we can really better inform our C I P program moving forward. Not just the C I P program, but the programs and, and things like that as well. So. We all know that there's a lot of areas in town, you know, Sixth Street, you name it. There's streets that didn't get built according to current standards. No curving gutter, no real drainage, all kinds of things like that. So again, it's a matter of coming up with a way. To kind of identify those, but also define those, put those in some kind of evaluation matrix. So that the town can make decisions about what are the right projects to pursue and how those might want to get lined up in future C I P plans. So that in general is what every master plan does, but this one's related to transportation. Um, this railroad project is going on right now. You probably noticed that that's been closed. Most of that project is being paid for by Jason Developer and. That's the street, so the, these are the future projects that we already had in the C I P. Street rehabilitation is really just a little bit of a holding pattern to move from Old Town Street repairs. To the rest of the town street repairs, which we all know is a critical need. We need to inform these numbers better with the paving assessment. And potentially with the results of the transportation master plan as well. So you could think of these as kind of just holding, a holding pattern right now for these numbers. Um, old, the, another new one here is the Old Town Sidewalk Pedestrian Improvements. Um, our staff and folks from the. Um, our staff and folks from the Safe Routs Program. Have gone out and really measured and defined all gaps in the sidewalks in Old Town, and there's a lot of them. Uh, a lot of those sidewalks are narrow, a lot of them are, don't have the right accessibility components to them. Um, and so this is basically. A program to go in and fill in the gaps in all, in in all the sidewalks in Old Town. Uh, you'll notice that we don't really have that starting until twenty-five. So it's not really in the twenty-four budget, but we wanted to get that out there for folks to be thinking about. Um, then we've got other new ones, vehicle replacements, this is just part of our standard fleet upgrade, um. Somebody asked me, what, what trucks are we, what are we replacing here? And the answer is, we're replacing a nineteen ninety-eight Chevy three-quarter ton service truck. About a hundred ninety thousand miles, that's uh, these are all. Diesels, by the way, and we're getting to the point where we're not, we're not sure we're gonna be able to get them um, permitted. So um, an O two Chevy half ton and O three four, three quarter ton with car stroke in it, so. Um, that's the price for new vehicles now, Sourcewell, the state bid program is. Falling apart a little bit, so. Um, but that would be new vehicles, kind of fit it out with toolboxes and the other, you know, things, tow packages. The snow material storage facility is, right now we store our. Salt and slicer in the open, because we don't have a shed underneath. And with range, you can imagine what happens, dissolves and it runs off, so this is really just a shed for us to get um. Be able to have more material on hand, but more importantly, to make sure that we don't have any wastage. And being able to buy um, larger quantities, we anticipate would result, would result in lower unit costs for those materials. Uh, liquid de-icing. So. Right now, our only real tool is to spread uh, sand salt mixtures and. Um, slicers, one of the terms for that, across the roads. Liquid de-icing can do way more than that in terms of. Um, if it's applied before a snow event, it'll help the. Prevent the formation of that ice, it adheres all that to the street, that's why it's there and it's all potholed after. Uh, it's there for two weeks after a really big snowstorm, because it. Just literally glues itself to the paving. Uh, through the pores, so that would include things like that, kind of ice release material. Uh, mac flora and their salts, liquid in liquid form, which is just a way more efficient way to apply. These kind of snow um, snow control materials. Uh, and then in the future years, we're. Might propose next year to have a street striping equipment installed in the truck, so basically uh, replace the. The little striker that we have now, so it will also handle um, epoxy paints. An air conditioner recharge system, recharges are extremely expensive. Um. You might be able to tell me better.
Yeah.
But, uh, we're thinking that that will have a fairly quick ROI on here. And the shop, sure, so that's the streets program.
Perfect, um, so we roughly have a minute thirty seconds left for this whole. Five years C I P, are there any questions that did not get answered over, you know, that we need to go over right now?
If we were to get our own street striping equipment, would we?
Technically have the drainage fund to talk about.
Oh, I know, I'm just about making sure that we're keeping it on track as possible.
The Old Town Street Repairs, that project was a great experience for me. But like, it was lovely and I got to talk to Nathan many times, so it went great and I love my new street, so thank you and sidewalk.
What did you end up? If we were to buy the street striping equipment, would we need to do the epoxy street striping contracts still, if we have the own equipment?
We're still looking at that, uh, the short answer is probably not, it's really actually pretty cost effective to hire these long line strippers. Um, so we're kind of looking more in terms of maintenance, but there's a whole lot of streets in town that just never got strided appropriately.
Okay.
And a lot of this would be kind of new installation, if you will, for appropriate streets driving.
And the, the hundred and twenty cows would not be them going and doing those, they would not go and strike those new streets.
They would, that would be.
They would.
Yeah, that would be what the contract is for, is to give everything kind of up to standard. But that still has to be maintained over the years, so we want to make sure we're prepared for that.
And the other question, and this kind of goes across multiple of our. Projects, but when we're doing some of the master plans, have we ever thought about reaching out to CSU to see if we could partner with like some of their masters or graduate students? To see if maybe some of them, because I know in the past the town has had college students do like a Parks Master Plan, number one is probably a little bit more cost effective for us. But number two, it's good opportunity for them to actually get some experience under their belt and work with a great community partner, so I don't know if that's. And something to look into, to see if that could be for things that. Again, we've got a lot of talented engineers and people and that can let them know, hey, you're missing this, please go and get it, it's right, we just, you guys don't want to be out running the streets, but if we can. You know, find someone that can do that, maybe it's not costing taxpayers as much money. And it's also helping a grad student have a great start to a career, being able to say, hey, I did this municipal study, so I don't know if that's something we've worked into.
Well, just to be honest, I've done these master plans for thirty-five years, it takes a lot of experience. To be able to put one of these together, engineering experience, engineering judgment. And I wouldn't expect um, any student to have that, you know, I didn't have those out of school. So it's um, it certainly if. It would be a good idea, I think it worthwhile to engage with CSU to kind of bring in interns as part of their program of. Helping them uh, learn what it's like out in the real world of engineering. And we've done that before, but usually are looking for very specific kinds of projects. But uh, we do talk to those folks quite often about that, pretty much every year.
I am curious on any kind of maintenance item, why that might be listed as a C I P rather than operational budget?
Well, that is a really good question, but just because it's in the C I P doesn't mean it's not funded from operational funds.
Okay.
So, the way the C I P has evolved, it was, well, any discrete project that results in a tangible asset. That's more than a certain amount got in the fire your C I P.
That makes sense.
But most of the maintenance projects you were about to say this are actually funded out of operations fund.
Okay.
Expansions are funded out of capital that impact.
Okay, thank you, that answers that question.
Uh, the only question I have is that AC machine for one, two, three, four and one thirty-four? Is it compatible for both systems?
Can I pick her brain on that?
Yeah, it it is, I think, yeah, that's the whole idea.
I would hope so, yeah, but that constant seems like it is. Yeah, yeah.
Um.
I have one question.
Go for it.
Um, as far as the epoxy street striping goes. Is there any way, and this is something you guys can always bring back later, to look out swapping something for a twenty twenty-four street striping update? There, some of the roads are very dangerous on. What, I mean, driving at night, you cannot tell on a, a large percentage of our roads where. The lane ends or it begins, it's bad, is there a way to get that eminently done?
Think it, well, we we kind of. You know, a lot of these things kind of moved back as we've had some funding challenges and whatnot, you're all familiar with that. Um, but it could be that if, if it's the will of the board to kind of move that forward. We would probably want to push back something, you know, something else in here to account for that. Um. It's not like the the street fund is in especially poor shape, so we could potentially bring that up. Um, so if if the board wanted us to move that to twenty twenty-four, I certainly wouldn't object to that.
Is there liability involved if we're not? As far as the streets go with.
Well, there's risk and as, that's enough for us, but in general. When I talk to our town attorney, I hear the phrase governmental, I mean, things like that. I don't understand any of that, but we certainly feel obligated to make our streets a safe.
Okay, now we'll move on to drainage.
Yeah. That will faster.
Yeah.
So. This is what my day looks like every day. I'm just skip right on down to B D M improvements, these are the numbers that are actually in this year's budget. They're in line with the B D M agreement, which you guys will be seeing pretty soon in its final form, the agreement with. The other folks, the regional drainage improvements are again kind of holding pattern, we know we have a lot of drainage improvements. To take care of, the modeling portion, most of the master plan is complete. We still have that one step left where we need to kind of attach budgets to it and then come back to you. And talk about the priorities of those projects. There's a lot of big projects identified in that master plan. And so we've just taken a rough stab at programming and what we think that might cost. Just um, so that we can see it now affects the bottom line. Um, the outfall for the Cleveland Avenue improvements, that's attached to the the RMS program, the streets program we talked about earlier. And there's about nine hundred sixty thousand dollars in grant money attached to that one. And. The street re- rehabilitation, the storm drain pan replacement, all ten, those are. Just the drainage portions of some of those street uh, rehabilitation projects. Uh, that gets paid for out of the drainage company. The streets get paid for other streets funds, so you'll see a lot of projects that kind of track along together, the, in that, in that manner. And that's why you see uh, Cleveland Avenue here, because it's funded from the drainage fund, so you see it here. And should I stop there?
Yeah.
You might be interested in that.
I am interested in that.
So. That, that number is actually missing a zero, which we found in any. Um, this is a project that's required by our, by the. It's part of our participation in the the Box Upper Stormwater Authority. It was part of uh, settlement that happened, I think, before our time. And uh, we're paying for the majority of that as part of that settlement, we really need to. Come back and talk to you more about that, but everybody, you know, we really need to get our representatives here to talk about this. People who sit on that, you know, um, but this is a primary cost estimate for what our, our, what that cost, what that. Project might be, they dredged it once before, it was about a one point four million dollar project. Uh, I think we have a little bit of additional volume to deal with this time, and in a general sense, that is. Dredges that reservoir to create more storage volume for the stormwater detention. That prevents flooding downstream as part of the Box Upper Stormwater Authority.
Question about this.
No, I think, I think we heard from.
Yeah, while you're getting to.
Okay, yeah, yeah, it'll, it'll be like an every six months.
Yeah. Nobody, go on us, go on first, so. Okay, on to the next one.
Super quick, um, there is a, a line item budgeted here for Water Source Development Plan, this was originally budgeted at four twenty twenty-four. This year's efforts have been focusing, hyper focusing on the renegotiations with the recruiter. There's a limitation on what we can move forward with until those terms are. Defined, so uh, we're moving up those dollars forward to twenty twenty-four and then uh. Raw water purchased at two point five million, that is asking the board to appropriate funds, so that should there. Be shares um, available, we have the, the, the funds available to to purchase those at that time.
Just to clarify on those, those are set aside funds that are in their asset header, they're specifically for water purchase.
Yeah, it's in one of the reserve funds and the inner water fund, so separate from what comes out of operations.
Questions?
There's one thing, I was trying to find it when you were going through, just to clarify, these. Outfall for Cleveland Avenue, so there's nine sixty of grant funding, is that nine sixty out of the two point one million, or that's separate from the two point one million?
Because it's separate.
Okay, so perfect, so, and those are all included, so roughly we have about three million dollars. Okay, so roughly we have about three million dollars worth of grants.
Three point four.
Three point four, okay, first, that was it, thank you.
Amazing.
Thank you, Megan, thank you, Bob. Now it's time for Billy. Oh, it's gonna be back again.
Only show tonight.
Yeah.
Um. So, uh, if we want to just roll right into the twenty twenty-four and the progress that I have proposed, um. The first one is the replacement of the soft trails, this used to be on the C I P in the past, and it was removed, I. Honestly don't know why, because there are a lot of areas still in town with ADA need. Uh, for soft trails to be put in, turned into concrete is, as well as for some areas that are heaving and collapsing. Um, so I believe that's really important for safety and accessibility. Um, I have it on here for just a year, I would love to assess how far the twenty thousand would go and then move it to further C I Ps in the future. Depending on how much we can get done. Um, you'll see the next one is the splash pad chemical room, that is just a rollover for what we have. From this year, um, we put out to bid the project to upgrade the splash pad chemical room. For the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars budgeted this year, um, through the processes that we went through. Tried to reach contractors, we did not find anybody that would come in and do the work for the reasonable price and liability. Um, I had thirteen plan holders that I contacted directly and none of them wanted to do the project as it went on bid net, so. Internally, we've done some process improvement on trying to figure out how um. How other town or many uh, departments can help with this amenity, is there. Very in tune with this type of project, mostly public works, it's helped me out, so um. We could roll this money over and hopefully get this done with their help this year, um, I'm looking into the option. And have some really strong feedback and potential on. Adding uh, or she's replacing the chemical feeders that we currently have. With uh, CO two and puck feeders, which potentially would eliminate the need to use nearly as much money, I. Don't exactly have how much that would be, but it would potentially save a fairly significant amount if it is going to be suitable for our system. Um, I've gotten very positive feedback that that would happen, and all we would have to do then is upgrade the ventilation inside. So hopefully we can move forward with that, but until then, this needs to be rolled over, we'll figure that out, um, as we go. Uh, the port in place at W C P is starting to shrink, which happens over time, there is anywhere from about a quarter inch to. Uh, one and a half, almost two inch border around it that's coming in. Huge safety and accessibility issue, um, that kind of tells you the price of port in place to do a two inch rip out and barrier around just one playground. Um, came in right at about ten thousand dollars, that means it'll be done this year, because it's only gonna get worse if we don't make that happen. Uh, Park Meadows Solar. Multiple people in that um, area over at Park Meadows so that in the evening, especially this time of year. When they still like to play outside, it, there's no light over there, um, we can get three solar lights put in. Two or three, just depending on where we want to go with the splash of the light, um, for that. Uh, ADA fishing pier, we've talked a lot about that one, um, I think we've been presented from pros and heard my input on that, and I think. It's a passion project for pros, but it's also something that I think the community has come out and said a lot about, so. Um, that is something that I'm working with the Department of Natural Resources with the Fishing is Fun Grant. Um, so hopefully we can work with them, I've, I've got some also positive feedback from a representative there that says this type of project. Falls right in line, listen to that, so that will be a potential to look for some creative funding to supplement some of that. Um, the one dock, and we would love to do two potentially in the future, we'd like to start with one to see how it works. Um, that would be like right around the forty-five, and then the other five thousand would go to pouring in some of that external concrete. Potentially, so that's the uh, project in place. Um, and then the other thing is, is the, the uh, ground master mower, you'll see at the bottom, eighty thousand dollars, this. Um, in my, okay, my professional opinion, we lack. Some sort of uh, of quality mower that can do the job that is required, right now we run two seventy-two inch mowers. And this one is a sixteen foot mower, it is four times. Um, it, it does four times the work that one of those mowers does and reduces. that one of those mowers does and reduces the impact by four times on the turf. You're not turning nearly as much. You're not going back and forth nearly as much. So one person can mow the same acreage in a quarter of the time. Um it's essential for the large areas that we have, especially since we um took on Harvest Park, which has three pretty large areas, one of them that we're going to program hopefully for large sports as well. It's kind of a parks necessity, really. Um it's something that I've always had everywhere I've been at larger areas. So it's something that I'll ask, but say it's really is kind of a necessity moving forward for operations. That's twenty twenty four.
Questions?
My only challenge is since it's included in our strategic plan to complete uh Parks Master Plan within our two year timeline. Uh two thousand twenty six for those costs seem like they are outside of our plan and and priorities. So I mean, from my perspective, I would recommend that we move it to as early as feasibly possible. Um I know there's chasing grant funds to assist in that cost, those kind of things, but given it's a specific item in our strategic plan, I think we need to move that sooner personally.
Is there a reason it's set to twenty twenty six?
Um just internal conversation. We also talked about the Recreation Center feasibility study. Where those two fall in line, whether we do the rec feasibility study first, the Parks Rec Master Plan first. I mean, I would love to move it up with to twenty twenty five. Um you know, if you guys recommend that, we would absolutely love to do it. Then it's just kind of one of those things of balancing all those funds to do those two different projects as well as some of the other ones you see in twenty twenty five that you know, like the um viewpoint playground, that whole overhaul is probably going to cost more than that now because port replaces more. That's been pushed off another year because that is a large undertaking. So some of these things, we just really have to balance out and um you know, part of part of what I'm learning in the first year is really just trying to figure out what needs now and then prioritizing some of these projects as we move down two, three, four years. Um if that's something that we could move back up to twenty twenty five and you guys want to do that, I'm I'm all for that. And I would love to, I think, something that is on the strategic plan. So.
One of my concerns with doing that is if we don't have the funds to act on what that plan lays out, we have to do another study in a another year or two years. That's one of my main concerns when we look at like the recreational study and well, almost most studies that we do do that we've done a water efficiency study in twenty eighteen and then we had to do another water efficiency study. Um so it's what I'm worried about is is we're spending a very large amount on studies that we actually can't utilize in that moment or even in the next year or two years. So do you?
Yeah, I would think that would be the ask. If we move it up, we're ready to move forward with recommendations on the CIP annually is what what we can move forward with there. Um I think the big thing that we'll find on there is connecting trails and in using on what we have to connect with local communities. That's going to be a huge one. And then just providing amenities across the town. I think East Side's going to need a lot of this, the more localized amenities and then just, you know, if we do a sitting in the park, all that stuff and tiny and data. I mean, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to need to pull the trigger. I think maybe having it in twenty twenty six really only pushes the funding off for twenty twenty seven to start those projects. And then we do it in twenty, you know, every year after that.
Yeah.
When are we going to say we need to do it and have the funding to back what the study says?
Also, we can build in with that plan to make sure they're future proving it to the best, like as that priority when we're doing that RFP to say that's our priority and to make sure it's a long term plan, future proof.
I just want to point, I'm sorry. I don't know if Mr. Mellon's had any comments. I don't know if you've been checking.
Yeah, yeah.
Those I just wanted to make sure because I've been looking at my thing. I just was like, wait. Um the only concern that I have about moving, and this isn't the Parks Master Plans is on anything. We still don't have revenue numbers until we have revenue numbers and expense numbers to talk about moving anything forward on there. Hold on. Um thank you for answering. I the only question I had was the mower and you explained why you need it. So I appreciate.
Yeah, and it would. It would be used while we're the the brand new ones are twice that much and we can make two for about seven, seven years, give or take.
That'll save us money in the long run.
Oh, yeah, right. Yes. Save our fields, save our staff time.
Absolutely.
Labor. You'll see the operations is where we really need our help. We're getting. And so anything that we can do to make sure that we're keeping the people doing the job they can. And when they, when they get done with that, having the time to do the safety things and everything around.
The one thing I will give you credit for is driving. He's crushed. On the mower thing, I'm on the mower thing. So on the specific line item related to the mower, I have lived here a very, very long time, twenty years or more, and I have never seen our parks look as good as they do now. So and because I used to drive by a park that was by my house and I'm like, oh gosh, when are they going to mow that? So but when I drive by, I don't ever wonder because it's already done. So I do want to give you those for the maintenance part of that because I haven't seen a lot of complaints about not mowing grass either, which used to be a thing for us. So it's awesome. So that's something I do want to give you credit on is I have noticed that our parks are looking amazing.
We'll see if we get goosebumps.
The rain helps, but you know, it takes some.
That means more.
All the staff, staff, they they work very, very hard. And then talk about that a little bit later, but yes, they they absolutely work.
Sorry, that was.
Nothing, nothing further. So, okay, thank you, sir. Uh general funds. Yeah, various support. Start with Kelly.
I'm sure. So looking at twenty twenty four um elevator and the municipal services building, we did include that in the budget in this year. We bid it out. Um we had like about fourteen people hold, you know, grab the bid plans, only one person bid on it. Um and it was double the cost of the budget. And so we needed to come back and kind of reevaluate that project. And so that's why we're um kind of pausing on it and we might learn a little bit more about what it might take to include it in the building. Um I'll jump down to other ones that I know of on this general fund, ADA community improvements. We talked about this last year about including funds as things comes up, uh come up that we're able to address. Um so this year we're looking at um doing some improvements for our public restrooms like in this building that um are are not up to standard that we need. And it's like the grab bars and things of that nature. And so um we have an internal facilities sort of team collectively, a lot of different partner uh part uh projects that we talk about. And so we're identifying some of those things and some things in the parks as well that we will address this year. So we'll be working on that. And then again, you know, throughout the next five years, things will come up and we need a a an ability to address it in a responsive manner. Um and then other things, I think I'm turning it over to Patty now.
Sure. So really, the only thing that I have for twenty twenty four is it's a large format printer slash scanner and I'm I need more data on that um before I I I request it. So I I'm not quite sure what the return on investment would be for the large. I I know there's a need for it, but I don't know how much time and how much money we already spend on that to um send it out to have those um the documents scanned and things like that. So to wait a year on this is not harmful for us. Um if something comes up that I feel like it's it's an emergency and we need a large printer scanner, then I'll come and talk to you. But um I'll be recommending to, I'll be removing that from our.
Would this remove some of the payments we're making to rent printers? Because we've spent like thousands of dollars in rentals. So this would not take place.
This would be, no, this is like when we have large format items that we have to send out to have scanned. Um that's that that covers.
So like blueprints, development plan, stuff like that?
Things that don't come to us, yes.
Got it.
Bruno, in a digital format, this would allow us to do it. And as we start working on our records management program that um Town Quirk Moose is working on, perhaps then that would be the needs because then we would have lots of documents that maybe we need to scan, but I don't, I don't know what that is yet. So um I'm I will be removing that at this point in time.
And then the other one on this list, excuse me, is the housing needs assessment, which uh Mr. Burr received a grant fund for um from the Department of Local Affairs. Uh and so that will get.
Yeah, I and that was a that was originally, thanks, Kelly. That was originally um allocated in twenty twenty three. And what we're doing is we're requesting to extend that out with proposition one twenty three out there. There's probably an ability to dovetail those opportunities and we've had some other staff priorities that have taken place that haven't allowed us to move that forward right now anyhow. Um so it's just a rollover to twenty twenty four. It is grant funded.
And then track that. Bob? I'm talking about track that.
Yeah.
For Cody.
Probably also take a stab.
Cody, you want to talk about track that?
Of course.
Thank you.
Track F is, it's in the general fund because even though it was a drainage related project, there were no town drainage funds allocated for that project. Um track up was a detention pond, stormwater pond associated with the development that was in default many years ago. And it put a whole, because the drainage had been addressed, required correcting that and putting it in a functioning state before building permits could be released for that subdivision. The developer came through and proposed the alternatives and put up the money to complete that project and the town agreed to participate in the cost sharing for that. The seventy five thousand dollars is the the retainedage amount that's for the warranty period, which um is coming up, but we expect it to be expended in twenty twenty four pending final corrections.
Questions?
I'm going to talk about the elephant in the room. Twenty twenty seven Town Hall Board Chambers Construction, five million dollars. So that's the elephant I'm gonna.
Sure. So we've, we know town is growing. We've been requesting people through our community survey, people are wanting more services, more amenities, things like that. So this is more of a community center. So think about library. Think about your senior group, not just town staff, but think about the different amenities that the town of Wellington will want to provide at some point in time. This is a placeholder, twenty twenty seven. Um looking at maybe, you know, it's it's it is out there. It is it's a planning thoughtful idea.
Yeah.
Um one of the things that we are learning, we've talked about economic development quite a bit. And and when I attend conferences and go to sessions about economic development, they they say, yeah, you can bring more people to your to your to your town, you can build more houses. But if you don't, what business partners are looking for is something for your, the people that work for them, somewhere for them to go. They want them to live in the community that they build in or they they operate their business in. And if they're going to, they're looking for swimming lessons for their kiddos. They're looking for a a bright, shiny new library. They're looking for those amenities. So trying to plan ahead for what Wellington might be looking for. This is not guaranteeing, this is not setting aside any money. This is, this is trying to be thoughtful about where the town is heading.
We did very extensive community outreach for this project too, like over two years ago, probably. As to what should and what people wanted included in this project and included all the police services, including holding areas.
Twenty nineteen.
Yeah, it was a long time ago. But there was a lot of very strong feelings about both needing this and what services should be available and what security it ensures for a growing town for staff. Providing secure areas to work. So but I we definitely should revisit it sometime. I don't think it's a super priority to put that on the schedule right now, but there was a lot of community outreach and feedback on this, on this in general previously.
Yeah, I agree. We need clarity because we're talking about swimming lessons, that's why like the recreation center meeting. So it we're trying to mix things in here. So like if we're talking about a recreation center, community center, call it a recreation community center. If we're talking about a town hall where we're moving out of municipal services building, call it that. But so future, not today.
This piece is the town hall. There's also a community center feasibility. So I was looking down the wrong line.
Got it. So I apologize. I will say if it's the town hall related.
Yes.
I I do remember the discussion and I rem- I remember many, many hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of comments from people in our community that did not want to see the expenditure on a new town hall again, within that uh that was like, I remember that. So that's.
And yes, I thank you and I apologize.
No, that's okay. So not a rec center then, it's a town hall. Okay.
Yeah, there was conversations and recommendations of having it as almost as a campus. They even looked at locations and property acquisition.
That's what I was remembering was the campus piece. So that's, that's it.
So there's a lot to that.
It's in there. It's a ways down the line. Um definitely do some more work on this, but um without without a vision, the people perish. So we're just trying to cast some visions about what what might be, you know, needed or or, you know, a desire.
I think it's responsible.
As we move forward.
So track death, the seventy five thousand sounds like the warranty. So ensuring it's working properly or whatnot that we hold on to. Uh this last major rainstorm, it filled up again. Is it working properly? Is it actually doing its job? Because there was still a lot of standing water this last time around.
No, we have not accepted the final um improve or the final construction acceptance for that. So there's still some corrections needed before the town accepts it.
The short answer is no, it's not functioning the way it was designed.
Okay.
To function. And we're talking to the design engineers.
Okay.
And the contractor right now, the warranty is up in November.
So this year or next year?
This year. So we'll need to get something uh hammered out in terms of an agreement. We've already started those conversations.
Okay.
Um that might get a little tense.
Okay, I I my biggest thing is I want to make sure that we're not paying out the warranty money if it's not working. Like, I mean, it's better than it was, but I'm like, I still drive by there in this multiple days. I'm seeing standing waters.
That one that you probably ended up in?
Hmm, yeah.
Is it?
Yeah. So, okay, as long as you guys are working, I just want to make sure that we before we're saying, yeah, warranty is good, it's actually working. And then I think it would be good for us to get an explanation or future board whenever that happens. What is working properly supposed to look like? Because I know I just drive by there, see standing water and I assume it's not working. Maybe there's supposed to be a certain amount for a certain time. So just an understanding of what is it supposed to be doing?
Ninety nine hours.
Okay, Brandon, ninety nine. Okay. Thank you. That was one of my questions.
There you go.
Okay. Next item, we have thirty minutes behind schedule.
I I sorry, I had to put something in there. The downtown master plan is also one of our strategic items and it's all the way out scheduled in two thousand twenty.
I can speak to that real quick. Um that was intentional. We're about to go under to a design of, you know, and construction of Cleveland Avenue. It feels a little backwards to say, what do you want downtown to look like under under construction? So we're just trying to be really thoughtful and use taxpayer dollars wisely and and not ask to study them while it's under construction doesn't feel right. So
I appreciate.
I think maybe it potentially might need to amend this strategic plan to align what's realistic of what we can do.
Thank you so much.
You have a much better palette.
All right. So we are, yeah, roughly at far behind schedule. Um I know it's, I'm just going to have this conversation right now. As a board, we discussed ending meetings at ten thirty hard. Yes.
We did.
Yes, I.
At this point tonight and budget coming up. I don't know if that's going to be possible with what we have left on the table. Or right now want to agree that we can extend this meeting beyond ten thirty if time comes.
So does anyone have anything heavy on the town facilities or cemetery? There are last two items on there.
Intentionally.
Yeah, because we could potentially just hold those and if people have specific questions on those, because those are both small, there's not much there.
That that takes.
Thirty minutes.
Well, I don't even.
Do you want to agree? You want to agree if we have to go past ten thirty, we can go past ten thirty tonight?
I don't want to go past ten thirty.
I would, I would say we need to keep it at ten thirty.
I'm gonna hold on as long as I can. I haven't.
Yeah, I'm going to run this strictly for the rest of the meeting. Um we did have, I guess, two weeks to end questions in, so I'll try to keep those in a minimum. All right, rock and roll, Bob and me.
Okay, we'll try and go faster. Um public works, there's really five funds that we primarily uh deal with. Um the highlights in this budget were requesting one FTE engineering position. And um the professional services, I know we always uh it's curious folks about that. Uh most of that is targeted towards additional GIS work or kind of slowly um tackling the GIS uh building the GIS because we really don't have a GIS operator right now or GIS technician.
Uh, building the G I S, cause we really don't have a G I S operator right now, or G I S technician. Um, just wanted to remind everybody that the uniform program that's in this fund is for the entirety of public works. All of the public works employees uniforms are managed by our um. Administration manager over public works, um, we've got some computer purchases, we got a lot of computers from the COVID era. That are like this one, that are starting to freeze up in interesting ways. And we've added budget for two additional mosquito spraying, just based on our experience this year. Uh, so with that. You could talk about the line items if you like.
Questions on any lines?
Um, I'm sorry, no, sorry, I'm just like jumping in, so I do have questions.
Just getting.
Okay, um, with the professional development. What did we add in since twenty twenty-two that jumped at about thirteen thousand dollars? Uh, budget, I mean same budget as twenty-three, I'm just wondering what the difference was.
It would have been, so last year with the twenty-three budget, we included a detailed spreadsheet to you. That included all of the line items for all the public works funds, so it's a repeat of that, we were looking at not. Not modifying or asking for any additional for those, and that holds true across.
Yeah, you just get that email back over, that'd be fantastic.
I can, I can, I've got everybody.
That's great, and then the software, it looks like we're adding software subscription.
No, we have quite a lot of complicated software, the G I S uh, system. Simple three D, Blue Beam, those are all software subscriptions, the software industry is moving towards annual subscriptions, you can't buy. A piece of software and not pay them the subscription later, uh, just doesn't work that way, so.
Oh, I think I'll answer his pardon, um, it was included in the I T software subscription and we're trying to true up what budgets really look like for each department. And so that's what he's like, it looks like it's into your question.
The only other question I had is with adding in the new engineer position. What is that role gonna be? I, I understand things have been crazy, cause we've had people tied up with water and sewer plants and. That's been life consuming, but those are both ending next year.
We, we think it's time for us to think about kind of succession planning in, in our, in public works administration. Um. That's uh, something that you do a lot in the private sector, I'm not sure it's public sector, concept or not, but it should be. And um, so the idea is that we want to bring in a. Uh, less experienced engineer, but somebody that can. Kind of receive the historic knowledge of the town's infrastructure that we've built laboriously over the last five years. Um, having been the first engineer hired here, I can, I can emphasize how difficult it is. To learn a whole town's infrastructure without anything to start with, but. Things like treatment processes, the street systems, and the various equipment that we use, especially as it relates to the new plants. Um, just that best practices in general, organizational knowledge, but more importantly, um. And the, the passing on of, of engineering judgment. That needs to be exercised and learned by engineers. Uh, over the course of some experience, so it really is a kind of a succession, I don't, I don't, I'm not gonna be here forever. And um, others aren't either, and.
Awesome, thank you, I don't, I don't want to take mayor's time, that, that answers my question, thank you. Perfect, we'll have more time to talk stuff later.
Any further questions from the board? No, thank you.
Street funding?
You're fair.
Um, you can see that even though the group is called streets, they do pretty much everything else, um. Everything from internments at the cemetery, cemetery to kind of general facility maintenance, they also handle the drainage maintenance fleet. Snow weather, all those kinds of things, they do quite a few in-house projects, that's the team that has been doing those soft trail. Um, turning soft trails into hard trails for years, um. So in this budget, you'll see that there's not a whole lot of changes. Uh, we do anticipate electricity for streetlights going up.
Inimaginable.
Yeah, growth and rates. Um, additional street striping, street, street construction materials, we kind of touched on the striping uh, question earlier. And then we've added a few lines to track the weather response, when, when we get. Weather and the tree limbs all over town and we've gone and got the dumpster, we're just trying to kind of put that in line item, so that. You guys know what that's about, and uh, separate from the snow management and or just. Where we've done the money, that used to happen in the past. So you'll see that there, there is a slight increase, well, it's not slight, it's uh, forty thousand dollar increase in the bottom line there. And most of that is attributed to the electricity for streetlights.
Questions?
Was street maintenance added or just moved from somewhere else to brought into public works at that, cause I know it, there's nothing in twenty-two, but then it was budgeted twenty-three and twenty-four.
And that's something that we'll probably be talking about later, but in general. The way the, the staff in this particular group or their salaries are paid and their expenses are paid. It was gonna direct bill to the street fund, and last year, it was changed up a little bit, or it got handled by transfers and. Um, not last year, that happened several years ago, so. There's no additional people in here and these expenses have always been there.
Talk about this one.
Yeah, street maintenance.
Uh, okay, gotcha. That is really just a new number to separate out. Street maintenance materials, we had a, you might remember we had an item in here that was called. Sand and gravel?
Yeah.
Well, this is renamed sand and gravel and it's not just sandy gravel.
Are we gonna assign numbers to that? Do they have accounts or they will be assigned accounts? Okay, great, that's it, oh yeah.
Then we have sand and gravel and snow management assigned in an upper category.
We have a C I P for storage, in the C I P there was a forty thousand for storage for snow materials.
Got it, but there was also material in there as well for the de-icer.
That was the equipment as well, that's all, capital purchases.
Got it. Um, so my question on this one. Um, when it comes to the electricity for streetlights, do you guys use anything like data wrangler? That actually goes in, monitors your usage and will actually cycle through, it saves tens of thousands of dollars. Do you guys use any software that does that?
I don't believe that we do.
Got it.
We are writing it down, we will take a look, yes.
It's important to note that we don't really operate the streetlights, the utilities operate, the electric utilities operate the streetlights.
Yep.
We just pay them.
Yep.
Okay, on to me and the water fund.
Right, um, some highlights here. Um, we do anticipate increase, you'll see this cross sewer fund two, increase in chemical and utility costs associated mainly with the expanded facilities. And the new processes coming online, we're doing our best to estimate what that's gonna look like for happy year of old, you know, current and happy year of new, give or take half. Um, a- and with the fact that just rates, of course, have, have increased for electricity, uh, there is an increase in the new tools and some additional lab supplies. For anticipating requiring for those for the new equipment and new lab crop or new processes going in. There is, uh, you'll see an increase on the water meters new homes line, now just to highlight, that's kind of pass through, right, like we fund ourselves back that. The, the development pays for those meters to the impact fees. Um, and I will say, as Mr. Bird mentioned earlier, um, that, that number is based on, that, that number is yet to be updated with our new, um, assumed. Uh, building permits is next year, so that will actually go down, it's under forty-eight thousand, see that right now. Uh, you see a, a pretty, uh, uh, also a new software subscription and support line item, um, as we're. Kind of growing as an organization, um, separating that out to identify, so we can really track it separately and it doesn't get. Tagged either professional services or to like R and M plant, which really should be about the maintenance of the plant, this is, these uh, subscriptions include things like. Our um, site ma- or our site security software that's, allows you to get in and out of the gates, in and out of the doors. Um, there's some cybersecurity support that's in there, um, our Skata server support is in there, there's an asset management program that's, that's included in there. Um, and then on the, on the sewer side, there's um, uh, some operations management software that's included in there as well. Uh, you will see also a sledge removal decrease, um, it's kind of a big decrease item. That um, we're anticipating with a new, our new treatment process and specifically some expanded drying bed capacity, it's a lot cheaper to haul off dry. Than it is wet. Um, so that's where we see some of that savings, if you go all the way down to the second page of numbers, um. You'll see really there's uh, four, you know, about four hundred thousand less than increase from twenty-three to twenty-four proposed ops budget. The majority of that is picked up, really all of that, and then some is picked up from the increase of the line item for the water lease agreement. Um, otherwise, we're going with those addition of some new items, we've had decreases enough line items that kind of offset. Um, the rest of operational budgets. We have questions on some specific lines, though.
Questions on this one?
Our water loan principles are a reason that we're, we're, or sorry. Yeah, the S R F loan, why the principal payment is uh, fifty thousand higher this year as opposed to previous.
It's part of the.
The amortization schedule, the way it uh, that's the way it fell, fell out on the amortization schedule.
Okay, so the principal's not the same every year, I know interest changes every, so the principal also changes the payment every year, alright. That's what I was looking for, um. So the jump from two fifty to three fifty on the chemicals, is that just because we're going to the new processes, drawing up that much?
Um, yeah, it is, and, and this is also us having to make some very educated estimates.
But they're definitely still estimates, I mean, as we move into the twenty-five budget cycle next year, we'll have, especially in the water side, we'll have. A few months under our belt to really help them um, track that. Um, but yeah, it is, and, and then ever so, I don't know if you recall. In, well, we all recall COVID, but the chemical increases that went up in twenty-one and twenty-two were outrageous and not in every case have we seen them go back down. Surprise, um, and also the transportation costs associated with getting those chemicals have continued to, to go up. So there's some of that in there, and then there's also, yes, there is going to be new chemicals that we're not currently using even, so there's a learning curve associated with that.
Okay. And then the internet service, I'm assuming that's just moving that from I T into the waterfront.
Exactly.
Perfect. Ask my questions?
Good, go good. Alright, thank you. Now we'll move on to the drainage fund, Bob.
Um, sure fun.
Oh, super fun, sorry, duh, got ahead of myself, I was so excited, I was like, we're almost back in the center.
Again, there's uh, definitely increased in electricity charges, here you'll see that there's a pretty significant increase, just um. There is, we are duplicating virtually uh, the site that we have now, right, so we're expanding that site entirely, keep in mind with the. With the water plant, we have an existing facility that we're operating, a lot of which will be decommissioned, um, though what comes online is larger, in this case, we're really. Expanding the footprint entirely, so, um, and there's, it takes a lot of pumps, um, a lot of aeration. Um, to, to work out waste, waste monitoring facility, so we are anticipating very significant increase in electrical costs. Um. We, it will require some additional outside lab testing requirements, you see the water sewer testing line has gone up. Um, as we're moving into more strict within the facility, there's going to be more strict and additional regulatory requirements. Um, again, some increases in lab supplies and some new tools, that's a compensate for those needing the new tools for some of the new equipment. Um, also we'll add supplies as we're doing additional testing in-house, um, also the same software subscription and support. Um, that one is, is even higher than in the water facility, is that includes, um, uh. Um, a Clara system by Hock, which is, um, aids in our operational. Um, instrumentation and control for our, uh, total organic nitrogen removal process, both in the, um, the ditch, the orbital, as well as in our step feed basin, so. Um, and then we do see, um, pretty hefty decrease in professional services, part of that is by. A lot, some of that is captured because we're moving some of the software subscriptions out to be, um, on their own. And like that, do you have? Any specifics, questions?
Trust me here, it's a lot of electricity, I mean, I guess, our, our current plant just, I mean, you think about, there's not much there, so there's not much to use electricity if you look at the plant right now. I guess that's, it was just like.
Well, and I, I would anticipate that the number, that, that actually you're gonna see at the year end of twenty-three is. Gonna be higher than what the budget was, cause rates have gone up so much.
Okay.
So the, the budget was one twenty-nine, we're gonna, it's gonna be a fair, fair bit higher than that. Fortunately.
The only thing I can say is absolutely look into the data wrangler, wrangler. Because that's a lot of what you're gonna be looking at is, it's a massive savings. So, and it's typically, they deal with municipalities, they deal with school districts, stuff like that, to help get electricity. Costs under control, if that can save us money. I would love to see that.
And just in all of our subscriptions, I know we talked for an I I T budget about doing a. Audit, but if we can just work to make sure that we minimize the number of users that need to have, like, if we can use one login for. You know, a shift or something, I, I don't know how the softwares work, but just making sure that, you know, just giving everyone. Access because it's costing us thousands of dollars, cause these are high-end subscriptions, if we can just try to minimize those, we appreciate it.
Perfect. Now we'll move on.
This should be quick.
Don't tease this far.
Um, we do want to use some professional services money to take a look at the rates for drainage fund, um. Part of it, and perhaps the capital part, and just to note that. Those box elder stormwater authority payments are made out of this budget. So, um, you'll see the, there's a minimal amount of lines here, um. And it's all pretty self-explanatory. Certain questions.
The authority payments, this is a pastor, right, people pay us, we pay them?
Yes. If we see the revenue, you'll see the.
Yeah, yeah, no match.
So did our water sewer and water roundtable work with drainage funds as part of their valuation? Is it something that we can have volunteers look at? Before we invest twenty K into professional services?
Sure, I answered that.
Let's, we can talk about that internally, is that something we would have Raftellus do, or that, so using Raftellus would, they already have the data. And the background, they've got all the analysis done, so it might be just more efficient. Um, we can always do a roundtable if needed to get some community input, um, but for the. Hard analysis, I, I would recommend we go with Raftellus who has been doing our modeling for the last year.
Like, it is a very specialized field endeavor and. Me can smart out do it, but it really is best. Burn dude then, for you.
Wait, we have someone on staff that knows how to do it?
I, I know how to, I mean, thank God.
They showed answers, no.
He has, she has learned the model, but we're using it for kind of our own purposes, not for setting rates, right?
Got it. Sorry, that.
Good question, good question. Okay, that closes that section, we will now proceed with a five minute break.
Oh, of course. No, no, we're doing a break.
Sorry, man. Still ready for the break. Twenty minutes ahead of schedule, no bear.
Job.
Yeah. We have an hour. Really good, take away, yeah, um, so to go over the highlights, um. I'm requesting one F T E park track operation supervisor, uh. Adding a new right to vandalism to be able to start tracking the costs of what that actually is incurring, um. That'll make it a little bit easier for, for me just to pick that out of the budget line, I honestly, I do not know how much that's gonna cost us. You'll see there, it's just a thousand to start with, just so we can use, you know, like. The minor chemicals that we would use it, some of this vandalism is getting to a point where it's gonna cost multiple thousands of dollars if it continues, but. Really just to start the process of seeing it, tracking it, identifying that we have the problem, and then in future budgets, moving forward with how to mitigate it, really. Um, horticulture, we've never really had a budget for, and I would also like to do the same thing more on. Horticulture, we've never really had a budget for, and I would also like to do the same thing more on a um. Like an annual basis redoing some of the beds. I know you say the parks are looking the best they ever have. Um, in my personal opinion, there's a lot more to do. So the horticulture is one thing that I don't think we have really spent much time on. Um, anywhere from a few um beds a year to one major larger bed or an entire park's worth of beds at WCP. To be able to do that, um and re-beautify some of those areas, um. There are some needs to readdress some sorts of safety issues which are in there and the porta potty rentals, um. As we're budgeted, we're way under budgeted for what we have out there. Um, we're currently gonna. Uh, probably over double what was budgeted last year, just from the services that are being provided now. I do have a plan that I would love um your input on. To potentially remove some services in off-seasons. So Centennial Park has an ADA and two regular for. Um, the high use times when people are coming downtown more, when people are using the park more, when we have events at the park. We could save costs on that budget if we were to remove the two non-ADA after the events are done down there. That's the way to do it. As well as that Wellington Community Park, we have the two bathrooms that are there, um. That are open seasonally, the the brick brick bathrooms that are there. We could remove any porta potties that we have. Um, there's one at the tennis courts, go on by the batting cages. When those two porta potties are open, we've had citizens that say they want them closer to those locations, but we do offer. Those so just presenting an option for you guys to say, yeah, we can decrease or no, we need to provide the same amount of service. Love your opinion on that, but that is a way to try to offset some of that budget that we're seeing, but. At the service we're at now, it's it's closer to twenty twenty-two thousand dollars this year. And then at the bottom, you see the the pros request for added funding for minor park improvements, and that was um. As they presented and as I mentioned, on fifty thousand dollars to that line item that already had thirty thousand in it. Pretty much every year. So those are the big ones. Um, I guess I will probably um just go ahead and say the the FTE is probably gonna come up, so I will address that. Um, I think right now, um, the biggest need in our department. For now and looking forward as we expand our programs in both recreation and the space that we're occupying in parks. Is someone that can supervise small, medium and large-sized projects all the time. I am the my position is a working manager and I do offer myself to be available with six full-time employees spread out. From recreation to parks across doing different things, all different tasks every single day. To provide the support and still do the main functions as a manager. Not as the working portion of it. It's it's really. Difficult to be able to provide the support that those employees need on a day-to-day basis. On top of that, at any one time, we have thirteen recreation seasonals that spread out through um starting. Anywhere from a little bit seven thirty AM going till ten PM, pretty much six days, believe me. When we have full programming Saturday, if we have events, sometimes we have programming for sports. So the oversight for those seasonal employees is right now falling on the recreation programmer. Um, that is a huge, huge gap in responsibility of time that we have employees in. Really to follow one person and then the manager as well. Um, and then there's three on top of that, three batting cage attendants that are seasonally on. And there are also two, if we're fully staffed, two parks seasonals and. So overall, I think there's a huge imbalance of amount of attention that's being given to our employees that are out in the workforce. Doing the work from. Five thirty, one of our parks employees gets there as a full-time employee till ten at night. And me being the only supervisor of the six full-time employees and then just one supervisor of thirteen to sixteen people. It's really becoming, uh, as I say about, and as we progress forward, having operational. Um, policies and procedures being there for safety issues, you know, if something comes up, like if we have a mainline break, we have to dig. You know, two, three feet down, that's not a one-person operation. If I have to pull a parks or or recreation. Person out of the office or another park person, those parks aren't getting load and it happens over and over. If that happens, I'm pulling a recreation person out of the office to go mo parks. And then we're like losing service to our community that's calling and trying to sign up for sports, trying to get coaches online, our volunteers are are. So really, we're we're kind of going, doing this back and forth and operationally, if we had a person to oversee the day-to-day. As we move forward, it would not only moves much more smooth, but also we would be able to provide so much more. It's just the one need. In the past, um, it sounds like I I believe um. The managers had asked for more irrigation help, but I don't need. I don't see the need for just like a specific area of help. I see just operational coverage. And being able to support as we extend out. Can they do irrigation? Yes. Can they program clocks to make it more efficient? That's can they help with large irrigation in the embrace? Yeah. Can they also uh run um the recreation side of making sure that all the staffing is there? Day-to-day operation things supporting on both sides of parks and recreation. Those are the the key highlights, um, can we go line by line? I think we have any questions, I guess I should say. Go with questions.
I was really not thinking that I wanted to do the FTE. You just sold me on that. So good job. I was like, I don't think we had, thank you. You explained it very well.
To be honest, it's it's one of the things I said, just like the more we we need this operation, so yeah.
Um, let's see, there was one other thing, let me find it again now, um. On the toilet rental, so just to make sure that I understand properly. So basically what you do is during the summer. Months, I'm calling it summer, but during the time when the brick and mortar opened, we would potentially remove the. Porta potties, it potentially, it's one way. But we would still have those bathrooms, there's still be there that people can still use. And then during the winter months, where there's not as many people, we would still have the ADA porta potty, but we could potentially remove this single porta potty that's there.
Well, unfortunately, we could, we'd have to put them both back because after we close bathrooms down, we do still have, um.
No, 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 at Centennial Park.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Yeah, so at Centennial Park, during the winter, where there's less people, you would keep the ADA porta potty. But there's another single porta potty and that one could potentially be taken out of service in the winter.
Two, 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 two singles, okay, yes. And if we're talking, you know, vandalism, less chance for vandalism, three or other one. Please, so just there's there's options, I mean, and I'd like the discussion.
I like the idea. At first I was like, wait a second, people eat a bathroom, but as long as there's still a bathroom option, um. I think the winter one is a no-brainer. Um, we still have a bathroom there. Uh, we wouldn't have three at a time, but it's not normally gonna be in the winter. There's not that many people hanging out at the park. The community park one, we may get some kickback from people for removing those.
Agreed, there's one right next to the tennis courts and then there is a non-ADA one currently by the um batting cages.
And now tennis courses, that's that's right by the parking lot, the other side of the parking lot, right?
Yes.
Brick and mortar and the batting cages are closer to the brick and mortar.
Uh, actually.
Tennis part one, I'm kind of like, it's literally like, it's right there. So that one's, I'm like, that's a no-brainer. I'm like, if you can't lock the. In however far it is to get to the brick and mortar one.
My goal is to take, well. The batting cage one is also there to support our staff, so I I would have to have more discussion about that because there is one staff. To manage the batting cages, they do rotate, but one staff person on at a time. To leave the batting cages and walk down the brick and mortar. You know, something we could do, I don't necessarily want to have to remove. Um, but there does need to be a porta potty for a certain amount of time. For a certain amount of time, um. Down by the baseball fields or accessible for for baseball fields because we do still have some programming that can be done there after we. Shut off, um.
I'd be more fine with leaving that one because that one is pretty far out there, but the one by the tennis courts, to me, that's a no-brainer. It's like.
And in winter, my goal is to move that one when when we're operational and using that um. Area down by with the playground, right? Down by the playground and where the the uh baseball fields are, excuse me, where the other bathrooms are. Because we're not using the batting cages and it's never been pushed down there anyway, so there's some options of moving as well and making it accessible as well as people doing services.
So I do have, so this one I actually have a few bits of feedback on, so I'll try and make it as quick as possible. Um, one thing we need to remember is the vandalism that happens to those bathrooms. On a regular basis at Wellington Community Park and then the bathrooms get locked. What accessibility do you have then after you guys lock those restrooms out because it's happened multiple times? When you guys lock the doors and you don't allow those, the use of the bathrooms.
Right, well, when we would lock them, it would functionally be unusable and unsafe to use, so we would have to. I mean, the quickest thing we can do is just call Republic Services and have them come, remove the unusable, unsafe porta potty. Put them back.
No, I'm talking about the brick one.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, right, so if you lock the brick bathrooms.
Yeah, they have to be shut down for the winter.
Got it. So what toilet would be there for usability?
That would be the porta potty would move from, if we're talking about batting cages to to turn it down there, yeah.
Got it. So but at the the end of the day, people use that walking trail. And access to that, something that we need to remember, which is stemming off of another one of my points that I'll bring up here in a minute is. ADA accessibility to restrooms. When you look at people with disabilities, you look at a lot of incontinence if they have to hold their bladder for extended periods of time. The closer that bathroom is to the walkable trail or usable area in anything, whether that's an event. Um, anything like that, that accessibility is huge. So and when you look at the Centennial Park damage, it is the ADA bathroom that is. Always damaged when they have to call and have a new one brought over. How many times have the ADA bathrooms at Centennial Park been replaced?
Fully removed about two to three where we can clean it up or Republic Service on their service can clean it up.
Got it. So because multiple people fit in the ADA bathrooms. So because I've been there and there is multiple people that are all in that bathroom at the same time.
Can I get a clarification? When you say the one close to the walking trail.
Yep, so if you.
Are you saying the one by the tennis courts or?
The batting cages. So.
That that one will be accessible. We will have a porta potty, an ADA accessible porta potty. When both of the restrooms are shut down, there will be a porta potty in place of those restrooms.
No, I'm not saying when, just in general. So people, it's sunny in the winter as well. So and when people are out walking on those trails. If they've walked past it and they're down by the batting cages and then decide that they have to use the restroom, you're looking at a very long hike back. Just to turn back and go to the bathroom. What ends up happening is then you walk all the way back.
Are you saying keep keep the service we have?
That that's my concern. So and the as far as the.
Winter or summer? I'm just trying to make sure we're on the same page, so you're good.
Centennial Park, if there's the ADA bathroom and I'm fine, if the the other two bathrooms do end up going. We just have to remember that the ADA one is the one that seems to take on the most damage.
But it's damage in the winter probably because school's in session, but I guess we don't know without the vandalism.
Report, yeah.
I could say that all of the removals due to vandalism, complete removals were done in summer.
Okay, got it. So that's kind of my my two cents as far as that those bathrooms and whatnot go.
That's why I wanted to present it to see what the idea of reducing service would do to balance. Basically, we're talking about not renewing services, but.
Well, yes.
Besides the two, the two at Centennial in the winter.
Correct, yeah. So that one, I'm, it doesn't really bother me here and there.
What are your thoughts on the porta potty by the tennis courts in summer? Because the brick one is right there. What are your thoughts on removing that one next to the tennis courts in the summer?
I think it's fine to remove it. They're just walking across the parking lot. That's. It's one of those.
Right there.
Yeah, that that was my thought, yeah. And I agree, leave the one by the batting cage, leave that one there. That one shouldn't go anywhere.
Yeah.
Well, and it's a regular bathroom, not an ADA by the tennis courts, right?
Good, good, good information to move forward with, yes, okay.
So.
Else there.
I do have a few more things. Um, one of the things that I know that we are adding a. A lot to the budget when you look at it. Um, one of the things we have to remember and we can no longer make excuses on is adaptive sports for Wellington. We are at that threshold, our town as our town employees go. We need to see adaptive sports available to people here in town. Um, it was something that I would have loved the availability. When I had my niece with me, there was nothing. So I know that we can continue to say, oh, we'll plan for it in the future, we'll plan for it in the future, but at the same time. Really truly, if someone comes to you and says I would like to sign up my ADA child for this. Class and you can't do it, they can sue us. Like it is title two is very specific that anything that a. Someone like you or I could do, you have to make available to people with a disability. So I think that that's something that should be immediately considered. I think it's important to consider. Um, that's.
It's not only being considered, we're working on trying to implement. Not the easiest thing to start implementing, but to be honest, we need to, you're right. It is something that we're working on.
Is it on the park side of the budget, trustee teacher, or on the recreational side?
More on the red side, but okay.
And we're covering that.
Yeah, that'll be next.
Got it. Um, and then the tree, so the porta potties, this cost. Does that include emptying porta potties from events that people have that are not related to the town?
No.
So everybody has to provide their own porta potties at all the events here in town.
Or, uh, maybe I can speak.
Well, it it depends. A lot of our events are during the summer and we have the porta potties there. If there is, um, we always do an assessment and try to find out how many. Uh, people are coming to the event and then there is a calculator that you can use about how many porta potties are needed. So if additional porta potties are needed based on the size of their event. Then that that's incumbent upon the person hosting the event. Um, but again, a lot of them are hosted uh during the summer months and so they are able to utilize. Centennial Park, porta potties that are there in the summer or Wellington Community Park.
Do we pay additional dump fees after the event?
No. I don't believe so, but it's just regular schedule.
I think we do. Do we pay additional fees to have them emptied?
I've I've never, uh, I just looked at the bills. I've not seen an additional dump fee for that. It's it would just be on our normal schedule. So I've not seen us go and call them for an additional dump. I was looking at the. Uh, bills yesterday, so I didn't, don't see that from, then fourth of July is different, but that's our own. Yeah, so.
Got it.
Every time I dump that, they just um very conveniently and helpful, like schedule the dump for right before the event. Make sure everything's good to go, but nothing is different.
Yes, and I just have one more. So the the tree replacement and trimming and tree spraying. It's. We're looking at sixty-six thousand dollars. Is there anything we can do as far as that cost goes? Because that, does that include everywhere or is that just the parks?
Uh, that's just in the park. So I have an assessment done by um one company. It is for one application of the entire park seventeen thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars to do one round. All of this, um, for all of the trees in the park system. Their suggestion is. One to two, need to get back on track. Doing two would probably be good to start now. If we get them on track, hopefully that budget can be reduced in the future. As far as the tree cutting and replacement, there are so many trees, um. Working on asset mapping and. Um, anywhere from, you know, a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty trees that need to come down. Minimum four hundred dollars to have them down and replaced, anywhere up to thousands of dollars depending on the size. Um, and if we don't do this, you, the price um two years ago was minimum two hundred. Now we're up to minimum four hundred to get it down and replaced, so it's something that we need to get done. Um, it is something that we work on taking trees out as a park crew if. If they are right of way and easily maintained, but arborists really are the ones that have the ear to do that. I mean. Certified arborists are the ones that take those down. We can do small. One inch, two inch diameter stuff that we can cone out safely, have three people on, do it properly. But if we if we, yeah, we don't continue with this process and get it done, put back in, we know. We know how hard it is to grow trees here too, so doing it properly and having the, the right companies that are back are the ones that are gonna help us.
That was on my questions.
Just one question. Uh, pond chemicals, is that for algae treatment or does that also include larkicide?
Um, it is algae at Wellington Community Park and Louisville.
Okay, just a slight recommendation maybe for future budget considerations, we had a lot of complaints about mosquitoes this year. If we can treat the environments where they hatch, instead of just spraying, maybe that's in another budget line item I missed, but. Something for future consideration of the standing water environments.
You need to treat for lark, right, okay, yeah, absolutely. And, and that would be something that would be potentially in coordination.
Treat them before they hatch, yeah.
Yeah, that would be huge, because we get a lot of complaints from people about the health impacts of spraying for mosquitoes. So if we can look at a way to do that, that would not only address the problem with the root, but it would also make our residents a lot happier if we have to spray less.
Larkicide pellets are better.
Okay.
Um. I just wanted to say, you know, we, I didn't go too much in depth, there is a, a fairly decent increase in the budget. Uh, but there are a couple of reasons for that, um, minor park improvements is one of them. That's fifty thousand dollars increase in that budget line item. The safety and first aid kits, this would probably ju- just be a one-time increase. Based on the fact that we need to upgrade all of the containments in all of our sheds that have. Uh, any mower or piece of equipment, turf equipment that has gas or aerosols for cleaning bathrooms, anything like that. We don't have the proper containment, so this would just be getting those into those sheds and chases where the bathrooms are to make sure that we're compliant and safe.
Um, on those, is that like a subscription where they come and check it every so often?
No, no, this is just, it's just like the yellow fire, you know, fireproof boxes for, for gas and for aerosol, for chemicals. Bathroom cleaning chemicals, yep.
Trustee Gator had a question.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't miss this before, just the, did we have like a bunch of maintenance on the sprinklers? Cause I saw that that went since. That's another line out, so. We looked at that, um, it originally is ten. I was gonna ask for another five to match kind of what we've actually been spending. So somewhere in the last three to four years is twelve to eighteen is what has been spent, so I was gonna ask for fifteen. Um, had conversations and I thought internally that it makes sense to move that CIP that with that. Kind of withstanding, year after year, it used to be on the CIP for twenty-five thousand for ear, large irrigation upgrades. Just to roll that into operations, so we can use that as we go for. Blocks, um, rain sensor, mainline upgrades where they need irrigation wiring, removing single nodes. Which on large systems are ridiculous when you have eight of those out there and can't even use your controllers, like all that stuff. That we can, I can do, um, just instead of CIP or if you're just putting that in the operational budget. So hopefully, again, that isn't gonna be a budget line at forty thousand dollars, it'll drop back down in a couple of years to that. Whatever the, that perfect, so, again, those are the, those are like the three main reasons that that jumped up, so drastically.
Perfect, anything further on this item? Onward.
Creation. Recreation. Uh, we do have, uh, two computers that need to be replaced, they are, uh, one is four and one is five years old. Um, just kind of, well, what you'll see is the theme, uh, a lot of what we get is goods and delivery, all that stuff. It's just kind of going up, so just a general increase of like. Um, I guess you'd call it inflation, just, you know, as we see from year to year, the cost of the soccer go, soccer ball goes from. Twenty-two to twenty-eight dollars or, you know. Almost for baseball are like forty-seven dollars per helmet these days. So, um, just, there's, there's those increases on, on the budget items, um. We've, we've added programs, so just increasing some funding to support some of those programs. The goal is if we bring on a new program to have that encompassed in our rec programming for the first year. Um, and then next year we will put that in a budget line for whatever we see that come out as needed.
Trustee Tietz, this is a great section for that last question.
What I said before.
Yeah, so, uh, yes, so adaptive sports and adaptive programming in general would go. If we, when we implemented, I should say, go into that recreational programming. And then, then, and then the following year, we would have a, a stable side budget, yeah, representative of what to do.
So with the, with the, I know that you'd mentioned it's not simple to get that up and running, but is there. Do we need to look at increasing budgeting in any of these to account for that?
Um, we have increased in, in gym space, um, so being able to get into any of the PSD facilities. Now that we have the high school, I will say this, it's really hard to get in there, we do have an option to get in there, be- because their programming. Runs so long because of all the teams that they have, to get into their gym, their, the doors for us open at eight o'clock. So we really couldn't start programming until eight fifteen, they close at ten. Don't have too many youth sports that their parents really want to start at eight. We do have to do some at, at Rice, Ice Stone and, uh, Ice Stone South, just because of our availability. Um, I think we have one practice starting at eight, um, but if you start a practice at eight, that'd be the only practice, there, nobody wants to practice from nine to ten. Nine leaves, you know.
It was the ability to use the Boys and Girls Club?
We do have the ability to use the Boys and Girls Club again for after their programming to when they close their doors. There's a, a pretty tight window there, we do use it for, um, they allow us to go in and, and play pickleball in there. Which we have started in the last year playing indoor pickleball. Um, we're increasing that from one day to two days at the Boys and Girl Club and then. One day, uh, on a weekend at, uh, the middle school or the old middle school, Ice Stone South. Um, so we are increasing pickleball as well, but.
So we need indoor space.
We need indoor space, um, as far as the adaptive goes, yeah, we would, we would try to, um, wrap that in with the, um. Recreation programming and then budget that out for the next year.
Is there a way that we can add a line item for that to have a?
That would be the following year.
Yeah, so, uh, they won't know the cost of the programming till they've implemented the program and then they can give a real number for the following budget, is that correct?
Yeah, so, so rec programming supplies is kind of like, we have a lot of things going on. But when we implement new programs, we'll pull out of that budget for what we think it'll be, because a lot of these don't cost, um. You know, some of them cost a decent amount upfront, it's, you know, the recurring costs are basically. But. That budget is big enough for us to use for expansions and it went from, uh, fifteen to sixteen thousand dollars. And that is because we want to put more programming in. Uh, a lot of these programs will probably cost anywhere from a thousand to twenty-eight hundred to start and then. As we develop them and bring in more in the community, um, that's when they start to, to catch hold and you have. You know, eight teams and four different age groups, that's when you get the bulk, but when you start them, you can usually start them for a couple thousand dollars and treat them.
So indoor, sorry.
No, that, you're fine, go ahead.
For your indoor programming, what, what is, uh, do you fill up your rosters and have waitlist? What is that programming like?
For the most part, we do, um, so for, uh, basketball specifically. Um, we had a cap at ten. And for the gym space that we had, uh, we hit ten, we still have people on the waitlist. And internally on the last day, I made the decision to add the eleventh in. Really, the only, the, the only drawback with that is, you know, playing time and that stuff, but we, we wanna bring in every kid that wants to play. So, you know, we reached back out to the parents and bring them off the waitlist, even though it meets our cap or what should be exceeded for sport, because we're trying to. Include everybody, um, the best we possibly can, but, uh. You know, there is a space open right now for eight o'clock, but nobody wanted to sign up for that space. Because they just don't want their children practicing from eight o'clock to nine o'clock and, um, and that, that's really where we're at. And we're using both Rice and Ice Stone in our games for the middle school, at the middle school.
Wow.
Every single night of the week.
Sounds like the community center is in pretty high demand already.
And then we'll switch over to do the same thing volleyball.
So back to the, the generalized question on the ADA, and I'm gonna be a squeaky wheel on this. Is there a way to have a line item that is an inclusive two times a year event where? I mean, I don't know if you've done any kind of adaptive play sports. Where you lit- literally set up two times in a year. Where you open it to people with disabilities, you set out a bunch of basketballs, you set out a bunch of soccer balls. You set out stuff that regular people would be interested in and you play. So, these kind of events don't have to be extremely organized to start. These events can start out small, but we at least owe it to them to have something available. In our community where they can be like, I signed up for this, I get to go do it two times a year, believe it or not, it means a lot to people. So I would like to, if we're with this, I would like to see at least one or two events. In the twenty twenty-four budget that are inclusive.
Absolutely. I mean, we, you know, we put on the park in place and it would be kind of something like that, and we do have. Uh, fully accessible stuff at all of our park in place, uh, but. Directly towards that, what?
Except bubble balls, only certain ages get to do that, so. But, I'm sorry.
I got another line.
To a kiddo that came that was disabled, it was a thing that he was too young to get in a bubble ball and play. So, and I get it, there's safety things related to it.
I just wanted to do it for her, that's what I would.
Uh, uh, it's one of those things that I.
I don't, I don't see why not, of course, absolutely, yeah, I mean.
More events.
You looked at, uh, and with this idea, can you come to the next prose meeting? So we can get some stuff down and like brainstorm with that group on how to do it, I would love for that to be there.
When is the next meeting? I asked this.
It's a.
The first Wednesday?
It's the second, though we, though we may have to move that one, so I will. I will give you guys posted, yeah, we love those ideas, I, we just talked about who, who can bring those.
So, and if I'm not there.
Yep.
You see me before.
Someone will be to represent.
Yeah.
Uh, perfect, perfect. Further question?
No, that was it for me.
All right, that's, that's, thank you, Billy, cool.
Look at us, moving around a lot.
Business at the cemetery.
Bringing me down.
Starting first, looking forward to this.
If you're ready, if you're ready for actually to have comments.
Would you please?
You've seen those videos where there's.
All right, Bob, you only got an hour, but you only got an hour to cover this.
You have fifteen minutes, I'm holding you to it.
Cemetery budget, so. Uh, the only thing that's actually in here are the materials for the internments and the maintenance that we. That we perform out there. Um. We had this survey which we completed, I don't know, uh. We've lost a lot of the pins on the corners and the locks and we need to go out there and reset those to make sure that we got. Um, folks internally in the proper place, it does, I think. Seem to me that we may or may not wanna take a more comprehensive look at the cemetery in terms of programs. I know Mayor Pro Tim, uh, McDonald sent me a link to their, uh, system, it's. Far out classes of our system in terms of, um, uh, cemetery management, but that just. That needs, that probably needs to be something that we've looked at and are moving forward.
Trustee Gator, any questions?
No, but I'm excited to hear.
Um, all I know is the American Legion does some things out there. And I was curious if there's any accommodations or things that would be helpful to make that easier or more frequent. That we could approve upon as a cemetery.
Um, yeah, absolutely, yeah, there's another volunteer group that does a lot of, a lot of stuff out there. Those flags, we generally kind of. Do the grunt work, you know, for, for those kind of programs, so, yeah, whatever. Uh, the community wanted to do out there, we would support that.
Okay, awesome.
Chris, the.
Very knowledgeable about the place over there, it's a working cemetery. Uh, how many plots are still available out there? And do we have them for both full size and for, uh, cremations or what?
Yes, we have all those, there's a ponders field out there as well, um. I can't tell you how many lots we have, but. Available, one of the things that we were, we were thinking about, there is some land inside the boundary of the cemetery that could be platted. For plots, uh, it just basically goes through a flat process like everything else. Uh, so that's kind of on our radar to do once we feel like we need those, those plots out.
Mm-hmm. Um. So any approximation of what we might have?
No.
No. No, I mean, I'm just curious, I mean.
We can teach you those numbers.
Hey, you know, it is about pre-planning now.
And it's really beautiful over there, it really is, it really is.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get, well, we can get some of that.
I'd like, like a no.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I think the city would like, I mean, it's just kind of out there and.
That hand, uh, we, we have, we track all that, I just don't remember.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim McDonald.
Some nickel knowledge about the cemetery.
Yes.
Back in the, the forties or fifties, weed mitigation was burning weeds. And at that time, they still had a lot of like wooden gravestone markers. Yeah, so what happened was, was they did weed mitigation and they burned the cemetery and there are unmarked plots out there. So one of these times, they're gonna be out there to dig a burial plot and they're gonna go to go to pop a hole and they're gonna hit a casket. Right. So, there, there's all so many benefits to doing the ground penetrating radar and the mapping system, it costs about twelve thousand dollars. And a story, simple story, um, back in the thirties up in Kremling, somebody had a baby that was buried. And it was in an unmarked grave and the family, years later, were trying to put a headstone on this baby's grave. And they could never find it, but because of that, that survey that we did. We were able to find that unmarked grave of that baby and they were able to finally put a headstone on it.
Oh my god.
So we work very closely with Reese Across America to, um, put Reese out on veterans' graves every winter. Um, that, we always have them completely donated by community members. They also help with some of the maintenance and doing the flags and things, so our cemetery is sorely neglected. And for us to not be honoring our past and present, uh, I think was a huge disservice to the community. We're not honoring our veterans that have served this community, we're not honoring the people that were, um, founders, so. There we go, get off my soapbox, like to see that, future budgets.
Cause you agree more.
Now I planted the seed for these guys so they can carry that on, but I think that's really, really important, can, you know, continue looking at that. And really, that, that mapping software is not that expensive.
So what is the twenty thousand for the survey that was budgeted for this year, what has that been used for, what? That was kind of rollover money. So we thought that contract would extend into twenty twenty, but it was, it was really there to reestablish the control, the horizontal control. To make sure we knew where all the plots were, because we had lost a lot of the, the pins and whatnot that we had to measure from to make sure we're in the right spot. So, um, we do have a kind of a full survey of what's out there now, the original plat for that was. I don't know, early nineteen hundreds or, you know, whatever the. And, um, it wasn't really fully tied down where it should have been, and I'm using survey jargon here, I'm sorry about that. Uh, but it was really just to make sure that we have all the corners, all the blocks and set up in blocks with plots in it. And there's, uh, forty or fifty blocks out there and we've lost most of the pins over time, so we were. Struggling to make sure we were in the right spots.
Got it.
We just don't know.
We are.
Got it, so now we know where the pins are, but.
We just don't know where the body. We reset the pins, we did some thermal imaging, thinking that might help. But we didn't really get as much information out of that, and this has been four years ago or so.
How, how does the board feel about having staff work with Mayor Pro Tim to bring back pricing to implement this next year?
Absolutely.
I think that's.
One hundred percent.
It's a lot of work for you, because the clerk handles a lot of the records management, we're coordinating on that, so. Is that something you feel like you have the scope? I don't wanna.
So why are you doing this, you, you work with staff on this and then bring it back in one of our other budget work sessions as to whether or not it's feasible?
Great.
Cause we can always just say it's not feasible for this year, but.
Cause we can always just say it's not feasible for this year, but, but let's see, especially if it's gonna be something that's in the fifteen to twenty thousand.
I'll take those grains.
Do we know who and how buried there, like is there?
Yeah, yeah, we do.
It's not as disorganized as it may appear.
And, and so the person who works at our front desk, Verity, I can't remember her last name. Yes, so she, she's responsible for the cemetery and so she talks to people and tells people with their burial arrangements and what's public works. Make sure everything is ready and things like that, so it's not like it's just willy nilly, I mean, we have a process, we've got records, we have information that I. I just can't, we, I don't know how many plots are still available, we don't have great mapping, which it sounds like, you know, mapping is, would be. I think important and.
Verity knows exactly.
Yes, Verity knows, but it's just a matter of asking her, she knows what we have and what we don't, what, you know, what's still out there, so. Look at that information for you, then I'll like to people who lived in my house. Well, with this mapping, you absolutely could. Those people are buried up there, probably.
Most likely, yeah. Yeah, well, it could be. Any, any further questions? Oh, great, oh, great, Bob, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Onto town, county administrative facilities.
Um this one is uh sort of managed by all, so I'm just the liaison for this one tonight. Um I'm working with the finance team to audit several of these items and that's still underway, so electricity, for example. Um we're trying to just uh learn a little bit more about that and make sure those things are accounted for in the right budgets and, and we, we suspect. Many of them um are being accounted for in some of our enterprise funds, and if that's the case, we're gonna pull them into the correct budget. Um where it accounts for the municipal services, building, Leaper Center and the public works shop, so. Um we're doing that audit right now and it's just taking a little bit of time, just because that's lots of uh bills to go through. Um other things you see on here is just some of those uh other utility charges. Um uh repair and maintenance, uh building supplies, so that's things that come up throughout the year, just like our home, you know, so we have to account for that. We, to date, we've only spent twenty percent of that budget, so we, we don't use it if, if we don't need it, but certainly we need to be. Uh accounting for those things, um trying to get a little bit more thoughtful about how we account for um things like. Uh all buildings, like the toilet paper in the buildings and Kleenexes and paper towels, and so that was kind of spread out throughout office supplies and again, kind of working on the audit. We're, we're really, I, I think a budget theme that I hope you're all are picking up is that we're trying to get a, a lot more transparent about what each department is spending. And so the public and the board and staff, we can go, well, that's the budget and that's what it accounts for and rather than kind of piecing it out in different spots, so. Um sometimes those exercises take a bit of time, so thank you for your patience on that. And then um trash, I recently went through this exercise and looks like I found a way to save uh. Like another about two thousand dollars on trash services and so um I'm, I'm working with the team and finance that will um kind of clean up some of those services. And then janitorial, um we'll be uh looking at that and seeing if we can bring that number down and. And that might be reducing service to some of our facilities, but certainly we, we are always looking for ways. Uh in order to save taxpayer dollars and, and be good stewards of, of our, our money, so we'll be looking at that again, and so this one. Um we're, we're hoping to tighten this one up a little bit more through October, but um we wanna make sure that we're being very thoughtful and look at all of that information.
Questions?
On the janitorial, have we bid that out?
I need to answer that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um Erica Scott, she's been our cleaning lady for a couple of years, I asked her if her rates were gonna stay the same. Pretty, she said same that they were in twenty twenty-three, so as far as bidding out to us. If, if we wanted to enforce my ideas out there, who could give us a bid for twenty twenty-four, we could open stuff.
Okay, just opening up, I know that that was an issue was last year, two years ago, we got billed for like two years, and so that, that to me was concerning. That we could go two years and then all of a sudden get this massive bill and. And I, I, I don't know billing rates for janitorial, I mean, it's basically almost four grand a month that we're paying right now. Is what it's budgeted, which, I mean, I know we've got a lot of stuff, but I. Would like to at least see, maybe there's not, maybe that's the best rate we can get, but if we haven't bid it out, we don't know that.
This is something that we're looking into right now, just like all these other building services, so a- again, that, when, when you have a. You know, kind of shared responsibilities, a lot of communities have a facilities manager. And so it's something that, it's one of those other duties as assigned and we're trying to take a real keen look on it this year to make sure that we are. Um you know, make sure the numbers look right and if we need to bid it, we'll certainly do that.
And then what was the, I know you mentioned you guys are trying to true up numbers for electricity and things, but the natural gas one doubled. Well, from twenty-three budget, twenty-two actual was twenty-one, okay.
It was budgeted at fifteen thousand in twenty twenty-three and it's uh proposed as thirty thousand dollars.
But actual in twenty-two was twenty-one. So it's ten thousand over twenty-two actual, I don't know where we're at twenty-three actual.
It doesn't seem too far off with the price, the way prices.
And then I'm curious to jump from the. So are we incorporating like more of like the toiletries and things like that into the R and M service? Because you said we're twenty-eight percent to budget this year, which is fantastic, go us, and then we spent twenty-nine thousand and twenty-two. So I'm curious how we go from twenty-nine to somewhere in the five to ten thousand range to forty.
Yeah, and that, that one, so the general building supplies is more what I was mentioning to try to true up the. The paper towels and soap and, and that, and this, this uh. Repair and make the service supplies buildings, that's, that's more of like actual building repairs. Um and so we, we just have aging, aging infrastructure and.
Are we anticipating there's a lot of things that need to be repaired this year over?
You know, looking at, uh Janice and I were looking at the report of, you know, what's been spent here to date and. Um you know, that we have aging H V A C, we have a lot of aging stuff that our, our uh public works team, again, it's another, other duties as assigned. For a lot of our streets team that we try to do that work in-house, um but there's things that we do need to do to repair it, again, like I said, we won't. Uh we're just anticipating the aging infrastructure, many of our.
Hope for the best, thank you.
Yeah, eh exactly, so we won't use it, but if you'd like us to um lower that one down, just to be better, uh you know, more in line with. The budget of twenty twenty-three, we can certainly do that.
Well, that's just my thought, is I understand, like, that, so I, I could see something at thirty and even if we think there's gonna be more thirty-five thousand. But I'm just saying, going to forty when we've spent somewhere in the five to ten.
So adjust it down.
I would, I mean, it's five thousand dollars, but I mean, that five thousand dollars could go towards help pay for the cemetery mapping, like, there's a lot of other things we could do with that five thousand, so. Unless we know, like, hey, we have, like, if they're the list of, like, hey, here's a list of all the projects and we know there's gonna be way more in twenty-four than there were in twenty-three. Okay, but if, if it's just like, we think it'll probably be about the same, I prefer to have it in that thirty, thirty-five range.
We'll do that for the next round of budget, we'll get that done.
Going down the line.
So in general, a lot of the line items, and I haven't really said much on it, because I'm waiting for all the final numbers to come back to us. Before doing anything, but a lot of. All the line items for professional development and stuff like that, that jumped ten, twenty thousand. I definitely tentatively plan on looking at some of that when we come back with that final budget and being like. You know, if we have two hundred K in extra funding to put towards something else. I'd like to try and look at doing some of that allocation, but other than that, I don't really have. It's a lot, it's a lot of numbers.
There's more for you, uh trustee mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
So next week you will have um a presentation by our. John Rhodes, which will be your full budget, um first draft run of the budget, which we anticipate there'll still be some changes. When, once we go through the budget pronanza and other pieces, so um that'll be, that'll be a big, a heavy lift for next week. We went through a few graph slides and things like that today, that has graphs and pie charts and things that. I know, we all do, we were all really excited today to have, to have some really good data. And I'm really excited for the data that you guys will have um at your fingertips, um. So they'll see where we're at and, and understand our financials and things like that, so.
We're gonna have projected revenues for twenty-four, we're gonna have twenty-two. Un-audited final numbers.
Correct.
And then twenty twenty-three anticipated expenditures.
Correct.
Perfect, okay, great.
Yep, yep, so, yes, so very excited for that, I'm excited to see it all in my documents. So that's next one.
And revenue estimates and fund balances.
Yes.
Okay, and then if you can just prep, cause I know, I don't know how you're doing revenue estimates, cause I know H H is still out there and. Impact, so I don't know if you're gonna do estimates.
We've not folded in H H.
So we're doing estimates or assuming H H does not have, is what, okay, perfect, so we need to know, understanding in the back of our minds. We could end up with less revenues.
Yeah, it'll be easy, we, we're, we're already starting to earmark things that we could tie if need be, so.
Okay, no, but it's, it's good to know internally for myself, like, okay, we could end up with less.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're just gonna wait it out and hope for the best.
Are we at the final in twenty twenty-one now?
The audit? You know, no, you only knew how few times a day we have this conversation, thanks.
I, I did get ahold of somebody at the firm today. Oh, you did?
It's a Christmas miracle.
Yeah, they've not been the most responsive, but I did get ahold of somebody at the firm today and he says they're, they're finishing up. Um their review of it and their preparation of financial statements, he's gonna get back to me tomorrow with some more details. But it sounded, it was the most promising thing I've heard two weeks.
Projected ETA?
He's supposed to get me back to me on that. Yeah, it, it, I haven't heard anything in two weeks and I finally got ahold of somebody today and he just finished some big job and anyways, you know, kind of story, but. It was, it was promising, they're still there and they're still working on it, so I'll learn more to that.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.